City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for December ten, two thousand and twenty four is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March two thousand and twenty five. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, and you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Mr. Stenbridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning, Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Present.
Good morning, Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Present.
Good morning, Ms. Panado.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Present.
Good morning, Mr. Collins.
Morning, Madam Chair, Present.
Good morning. Uh, we just a note that we are a six-member board, and with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Stenbridge.
Uh, certainly, Madam Chair, but the seventh member has joined us, actually.
Oh, there is a seventh member?
Yeah.
My apologies, who's our, who am I missing?
Uh.
Alan. I see Alan, okay, I'm so sorry.
It's quite all right.
Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Present.
Good morning, thank you for letting me know. Now the floor is yours, so we are a seven-member board. Floor is yours, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we'll begin with the approval of hearing minutes scheduled for nine thirty. This morning, we have the minutes for November seventh and November nineteenth. Uh, with that, I'll make a motion to, um, to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
That will go to the extension scheduled for nine thirty AM. I, there are three this morning, I will read them all in. Uh, they are all reasonable within a year's timeframe for the request. So with that, we'll begin with case BOA one-two-one-three-zero-nine with the address of fourteen-eighty Blue Hill Ave- Avenue. Next, we have case BOA one-one-eight-five-five-eight-two with the address of twelve George Street. And finally, we have case BOA one-three-four-nine-zero-two-five with the address of eleven-fifty-three to eleven-fifty-five Washington Street. Those are the cases we have today.
Any questions from the board? May I have a motion to grant the extensions as requested?
Motion to grant the motion requested.
Second, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Next, we have a board final opportunity case scheduled for nine thirty AM. This is case BOA one-four-seven-six-eight-seven-six with the address of two-forty-six Park Street. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Thank you, Mrs. Stenbridge, good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, for the record, Richard Lins, with a business address of two-forty-five Summer Street East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Uh, Madam Chair, the board may recall this project was approved back in October of two thousand and twenty-three uh, to allow the construction of a four-story, a nine-unit multifamily residential with one voluntary IDP unit. The board, uh, subjected that decision to a proviso for design review with the Boston Planning Department. Uh, the Boston Planning Department completed its review, uh, but during that process, uh, a stairwell in the rear of the property that is within the building footprint uh, was required to be modified and enclosed. Uh, and therefore, when we resubmitted these back to ISD, uh, because relief had been granted for the rear yard setback, uh, this was cited as a board final arbor matter. If we jump down to, uh, slide fourteen, that will probably provide the perspective, uh, that would be most helpful, uh, for the board's consideration. Uh, this is probably a good place to start. Uh, on the right side of the screen, I believe we have Harde Street. On the left side of the screen, that would be the rear portion of the building. Uh, the shaded area is the enclosed stairwell, which goes up to the fourth level. That is to provide the appropriate means of egress, uh, for, uh, those upper-level units, uh, from, access from a corner. Um, one thing I will point out is that the board did approve this under the prior version of Article fifty-three. Uh, since this was approved, uh, the amendments to Article fifty-three went into effect. Article fifty-three, section thirty permits, uh, the, um, vertical addition to a non-conforming building, which this would be, provided that you stay within the existing building footprint and do not exceed the height. So otherwise, this would be as of right, uh, because it was approved under prior zoning, we do require board final arbor in order to modify the plan as presented. I'm happy to answer any questions from the board on this modification.
Thank you, any questions from the board? Hearing done, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the extension.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'll move on to the recommendations from the recent subcommittee hearing. Uh, we will start off with case BOA one-six-two-nine-six-six-six with the address of twenty Flavia Street. The, uh, the case was approved. Next, we have case BOA one-five-seven-seven-three-three-two with the address of fifteen Acton Avenue. This will, this case was approved. Next, we have case BOA one-six-two-six-four-three-seven with the address of fifty-eight Centrus Avenue. This case was approved. Uh, finally, we have a rediscussion case, which is case BOA one-six-one-three-eight-seven-nine with the address of forty-three to forty-five Wood Avenue. This case was deferred until, will be deferred until January twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-five. Those are the results from the subcommittee hearing.
Any questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the subcommittee recommendations.
There are second, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we'll move on to the hearing scheduled for nine thirty AM. And with that, we will ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe.
With that, Mr. Rubenoff, are you?
Yes. Uh, good morning to, uh, Madam Chair and the, the board, Derek Rubenoff of Derek Rubenoff Architects, eighty-two dash eighty-four Spring Street in West Roxbury. Um, we'd like to, um, defer case, uh, BOA one-six-five-three.
It's the address.
Six, three-zero-two Summit Avenue.
Thank you.
So that, this will be for case BOA one-six-five-three-three-nine-six with the address of three-zero-two Summit Avenue. Uh, would you go ahead and explain?
Uh, yes, we were, um, we had, uh, during a public process realized that we needed an additional, um, uh, there was additional zoning violation, we needed roof, uh, relief for, for usable open space, and we sent the drawings, updated drawings to, uh, Stephanie, uh, to, to get those reviewed, and they were reviewed, uh, but not in time, um, uh, before the ad, uh, went out. And so Stephanie emailed me on the twenty-first of November and asked that we, um, defer to a later date so that, uh, the project can be re-advertised, reflect the updated refusal letter with the additional violation added.
Any questions from the board? Uh, what dates do we have?
We could do January twenty-eighth, February fourth, or February twenty-fifth.
Mr. Rubenoff.
Uh, January twenty-eighth would be great, I think.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer to January twenty-eighth.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
There are any further requests for which are also deferrals for this timeframe? Hearing done, then we'll move on to case BOA one-five-seven-one-two-four-zero with the address of thirteen Cleveland Avenue. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, my name is George Marancy, I'm an attorney with a business address of three-fifty West Broadway in South Boston. Also, uh, here today is Eric Zacherson, the project architect. Uh, thank you for introducing the case, Mr. Stenbridge. This is an application to change the legal occupancy of the building at thirteen Cleveland Avenue in Alston to a four-family dwelling and to expand living space by means of two roof dormers, a rear addition, and the refinishing of an existing finished basement. The present legal occupancy is a paternal club and temple, as the building was used by its previous owner, the Rosicrucian Order. Property is located in a three-F-four-thousand zoning sub-district, um, sub-district. Cleveland Avenue is a cul-de-sac which runs off of Everett Street near its intersection with North Beacon Street. There are a number of one, two, three, uh, and multifamily, uh, buildings in the area, including directly next door to the project site, the one-hundred-seventy-five-unit, fifteen-North Beacon Street condominium building. The existing building is two-and-a-half stories, consisting of a finished open basement, uh, first floor with kitchen, living room, bathroom, and offices, and a second-floor function room. The proposed scope of work calls for a rear addition measuring approximately fifteen feet by nineteen feet wide, the addition of a shed dormer on each side of the current pitched roof. Um, the result would be new occupancy of four units, unit one being a bi-level, two-bedroom unit on the basement and first floor of the building, with both unit bedrooms located on the first floor, a two-bedroom unit located entirely on the first floor, and a three-bedroom unit located on each of the second and third floors. The building's front porch will be lowered in the front yard area, regraded, to allow for additional light and air exposure for the basement living area of, uh, unit one. With respect to zoning, there are dimensional violations, which, uh, as the planning department recommendation notes, are existing conditions not being changed, uh, but which are triggered by the, uh, proposed scope of work. These are the violations owing to the minimum lot area and, uh, minimum lot area for the additional dwelling units. As the recommendation points out, of course, the lot size is not changing. Um, uh, and these violations owe to the existing approximately three-thousand-three-hundred-twenty-six-square-foot lot size. Uh, these other violations that owe to existing conditions are the lot frontage violation and the front yard setback violation, neither of which is being changed. No parking, uh, is to be provided, uh, which requires a variance. Uh, again, as the planning department recommendation notes, there is no way to introduce parking to the lot. Uh, the site is in close proximity to, uh, bus stop for MBTA routes fifty-seven and five-oh-one, and a lack of parking is consistent with BTD minimum parking ratios. There's a violation for exceeding the maximum building height, which is thirty-five feet. This owes to the fact that the two dormers that are to be added, um, create a full third floor. But the height of the dormers is actually below the top point of the building's, uh, existing pitched roof, uh, thus minimizing any effect or, or even perception of the increase in zoning height. Uh, the overall building height of the building to the pitch of the roof is not being increased. There's also a violation for lack of usable open space. Uh, again, as the planning recommendation notes, the amount of provided open space at approximately five-hundred-fifty square feet per unit is not inconsistent with surrounding neighborhood conditions, uh, nor is the proposed FAR of one-point-seven, which is, uh, in fact, in excess of the zoning maximum of point-eight, uh, but again, which is, um, uh, typical of, uh, prevailing conditions in the surrounding neighborhood. With that, Madam Chair, members, I'll stop and will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, are there questions from the board? Hearing done, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the boards, Ziggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, our office hosted an abutters meeting regarding this proposal in early two thousand and twenty-four, at which concerns were raised regarding parking and maneuverability on a short dead-end street, as well as a concern about open space and the loss of mature trees on the property. Proponent presented to the Alston Civic Association and their membership is supportive of the proposal. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board, thank you.
Thank you. I see no additional raised hands, Madam Chair. Thank you, any, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion approved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one-six-six-six-six-two-four with the address of one-twelve Queenberry Street. This is an Oracle Haley case brought to us by the Mayor's Office of Housing. And if the applicant and their, and or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, sir, uh, good morning, Secretary Stenbridge, Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, Attorney Joe Hanley from McDermott Colty Miller &amp; Hanley here at twenty-eighth State Street in Boston. Uh, I have the pleasure of representing the Fenway CDC, uh, who is with me here today. I'll start with this slide, uh, just to introduce you to the team. Uh, beneath John, Ed Quinn, and Nick Pittman are, uh, leadership, uh, staff with the Fenway CDC who are on with me. Also here as part of the presentation is Rob Del Salvio from Embark Architects. Um, and just to give you sort of a high-level overview here, uh, one-twelve Queensbury Street in the West Fenway, uh, is the site which, uh, the Fenway CDC seeks to, uh, revitalize and replace a, a long-existing sort of, uh, uh, defunct, uh, single-story retail structure in the residential neighborhood in order to create much-needed, uh, affordable housing for, uh, working individuals and families. Uh, we have worked closely with the Mayor's Office of Housing. We are also, uh, compliant with the recently updated text amendment for, uh, allowance of no parking at affordable, uh, developments, which is supported by the walk shed and the location, as well as certain TOD members, uh, measures, excuse me. Uh, and the principal facade will be brick with cast stone accents, and we are building to passive house standards. Next slide, please. So, uh, context map, and just to put this into perspective as well, the Fenway CDC is a, uh, over fifty years of service, uh, providing affordable housing and services to folks, uh, in the Fenway community, over six-hundred-and-fifty families, individuals, uh, who are housed through the Fenway CDC. So this is right in their catchment area, you'll see the site in, uh, red here. What this is depicted to show is the walk shed as well. You see between three to six public subway stations and numerous bus routes, uh, within close proximity to this site. So it's really ideal for, uh, the residential use, but also, uh, the, uh, the parking, no parking configuration. Next slide, please. So, uh, just a broader picture to give you a sense of the overall neighborhood, um, and I'll get into the relief, uh, briefly. Um, you'll see the existing, uh, building and its context, uh, in the red hash. And more importantly, in addition to all the, uh, transit outlets within close proximity, you also have a number of public parks, which helps to support our open space variance. Next slide, please. And just to bring you closer up, you'll see sort of the missing tooth, if you will, in the red hash. That is the existing single-story, sort of nondescript, uh, commercial building that would be replaced, um, by the project. Next slide, please. So, uh, site context, um, these three views from the front, right, center, and left, you can see, uh, from the upper side, again, the single-story existing structure that is vacant. It's a former laundromat, and, uh, towards the, uh, lower-left and upper-right, you can see the views on each side. There's a shared alleyway that runs along the side. And as part of this presentation, or part of this project, rather, we've had, uh, very, uh, thorough and, uh, instructive, uh, outreach with our immediate abutters, uh, in support of this project. Next slide, please. So just to give you, uh, the, the, the building metrics, which you'll, you'll see in plan view a little bit, uh, the site itself is approximately four-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-four square feet. Um, the floor area ratio, which we're proposing, is four-point-four-nine. Uh, the building gross square feet for the new building will be just under twenty thousand, gross nineteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-six square feet, and twenty-four units of all affordable housing, intended to, um, address the need for single working families and the like, um, with a mix of studios and one-bedrooms. And we've also worked hard to, uh, introduce both visitor and resident bike parking and public realm improvements at, towards the front of the site, which you'll see here. Next slide, please, to take you through, uh, the zoning code. Uh, we are in the MFR zone here. Obviously, the existing structure to be, remains is a non-conforming structure that's, uh, vacant and non-contributing. We require relief in, in five areas. The first is, uh, basement units. Uh, and I think it's important to note here that of the twenty-four units, only one is considered to be a basement, and it's been designed with appropriate measures. Uh, so it's, it's minimal in the relief necessary. The FAR, which is allowed here, is four. This project seeks a four-point-three-nine, so it is, uh, both, uh, within context of its surrounding characteristics and scale, uh, but also, uh, de minimis and reasonable as necessary. And you'll see that as the project complies with the building height, with the lot width, and the lot frontage. Um, open space variance, right now, there are, there is none. It's a very tight site. What we've done is introduced, um, open space in the maximum allowable, uh, way in order to introduce affordable housing, and also, uh, realizing that we are in a great location with several nearby parks. Uh, the front yard setback is essentially modal, which is required, but there are a few bays that, uh, project and add to its architectural design. And finally, the rear yard setback, which is also, uh, an existing non-conformity, and, and is supported by the new aspects of this site, uh, required is twenty, and, uh, we're basically at the lot line at the rear. Next slide, you'll see the zoning refusal letter, which I do not need to go through, but it essentially, um, taps on all five of those areas. I'd like to hand it over to Rob DeSalvio to take you quickly through the presentation. Rob?
Uh, thanks, Joe. Can you go down two slides from here? So I'd like to just start with a view of the exterior of the building. You're standing in Queensbury Street, looking at the building. Uh, one-ten Queensbury is on your left, one-twelve Queensbury, which is the subject of this discussion, is in the center, and then two-eleven Park Drive is on the right-hand side of the distance. So the proposed building is predominantly brick masonry with various accents and details, uh, as well as a lot of precast, uh, belt courses and cornice lines with a mansard-type roof condition of a metal panel, as shown here. Next slide, please. For a site plan, Queensbury Street, again, at the top left of the page, the site is surrounded on three sides by what is currently all paved surfaces because it relates to access easements for parking that's situated at the back of the property from many of the surrounding buildings. Um, the build, the site, it's important to note slopes from the Queensbury Street elevation down to the rear of the property, about five-and-a-half, six feet or so, which is what's going to facilitate that basement unit not really being that underground, as you may think. Uh, along the front of the property, we're planning a green space seating area to push the building back and generally conform with the building alignment of all the other buildings up and down Queensbury Street, although we do have the one front yard setback area, so we're going for about two-and-a-half feet. Next slide, please. Uh, on the ground floor, Queensbury Street is on your left-hand side. You enter the building, there's three units on this floor. The stair elevator cores are all always situated in the bottom of the page, facing the two-eleven Park Drive street side. And on the top of the page is the access drive, which gets you down and other neighboring buildings to the rear parking lot. Next slide, please. The typical layout is shown here, it's again, it's a combination of studios and one-bedroom units. Studios are about five-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet on average, and the one-bedrooms are approximately three-hundred, six-hundred-and-thirty square feet on average. Next slide, please. Next slide, please, great. And just, uh, to go back up one, please, to the basement level. So this is the basement level of a plan. Again, because the site is sloping so dramatically from Queensbury Street, many of the uses not requiring windows are situated on the left-hand side, but in the top right, where you start to get window line present again, is where we can get the one basement unit that Joe had. is where we can get the one basement unit that Joe had been mentioning earlier. Next slide. Rooftop is planned for solar panels and other mechanical equipment. We'll seek to get as many solar panels up there so we can safely accommodate on the roof. Next slide, please. This is a view, elevation view on Queensberry Street side. Here, you can see more clearly some of the alignments that we've tried to achieve with changing materials, cornice lines, and other belt courses throughout the facade of the building. Next slide, please. This is the alley service drive elevation between our building and 110 Queensberry Street. Here, you can see more clearly how the grade is sloping down from Queensberry Street to the rear parking aisle. Next slide. And just some of the materials talking about, again, the green, which models for the green color will be a metal panel, like a standing seam type detail. All of the cast stone elements, both cornices, belt courses, and water tables will be precast concrete. And then the brick will feature a lot of detailing. And the spandau conditions, those between the window sill and the window head of adjoining floors. Next slide. And that's all.
Yeah, thank you, Rob. And Madam Chair, just briefly, one of the things I should have mentioned in the zoning overview, there's a series of overlays that we're in. The first is the groundwater conservation overlay district. So in your records, you should have the approval letter from Boston Water and Sewer. And I know that you obviously take testimony from the groundwater trust. We want to thank them for their guidance on this and helping us in compliance with that requirement. And we're also within the neighborhood design overlay and the green belt protection and restricted parking district. Those were all carefully scoped and administered through the BPDA's small project review process, which resulted in their recommendation of approval in July of this year. So that concludes our presentation. Thank you for your time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I am familiar with the good work of the Fenway CDC. Can you just talk about the affordability levels on this project?
Yeah. Sineeth, are you on, or would you like me to handle that?
No, I can thank you, talk about it. Thank you, ZB member. So we are at 60% AMI or lower. So all units are 100% affordable and at 60% AMI or below.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, I see, I read the BPDA memo, the planning department memo, and I see that three of the units are set aside for formerly homeless individuals. How do you select those individuals or families?
They are referred to us by the city. So, yeah, so the process comes from the city. So it's not part of the lottery that we usually do. So the city refers these individuals or families to us, and we accommodate that.
Okay, just going to make a comment that I really appreciate the income levels, especially to see 60% and 30%, and that the project is totally affordable. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Valencia.
Thank you. With that, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office defer to the judgment of this board. As you heard from the applicant's representation, they went through a BPDA-led community process. I see that someone's offered Planning Two to elaborate to that. Our office is unaware of any concerns. Many in the community were pleased with the deep affordability, as well as the mixture of units, and it's proximally in the neighborhood. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone from Planning want to speak?
Hi, thank you, Madam Chair and the members of the board. My name is Dylan Norris. I was the project manager assigned to this, while it came under a small project review application. I would just like to note that we held a virtual public meeting on June 18th of 2024, and the project was very well received by the community, in which we then recommended the project to our board on July 18th, where it received approval. Thank you. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Mr. Semenali?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semenali, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both G card letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lily?
Good morning, Chair and members of the board. My name is Lily with District 8, City Councilor Sharon Durkin's office. At this time, Councilor Durkin would like to go on record in support of the application. She's excited about this additional affordable housing being built in the Fenway and believes Fenway CDC is a capable housing developer, eager to meet the urgent need and create this kind of housing in the city of Boston. So we urge the board to request this zoning relief. Thank you.
Thank you.
James, I sent a message to unmute you. James?
Good morning, boys and madam chairman. I'm a resident of the Fenway. I've lived here since 2008. And I used to go to that location when it was the cleaners. Since it's been closed, it was sort of an eyesore. And now, this new building project, I think it's great for looking, someone looking for affordable housing. And I'm also a Fenway resident, like I mentioned, and I'm involved in the board and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
With that, may I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve, and I think they're seeking, is this one seeking planning parks review?
It's in Article 80, so I'm...
It's Article 80, so yeah, so...
Is your motion complete?
Looks like she may be frozen.
I know she does.
I can make a motion of approval. I think this is a good project. I think the variances, you know, make sense for providing the 100% affordable units.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes, good project, happy to support.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries. And it looks like Ms. Panato knows to get off and back on. So thank you, guys. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Have a good day.
Thank you.
The next case has been deferred, so that will take us to case BOA 1653330, with the address of 105 Queen Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Hello? Good morning. This is Derek Bloom from Bloom Architecture. Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for hearing us today. Oh, you're sharing it. Great, thank you. So this project is a small alteration in the front of the building. You see in the top right photo here. You see an unenclosed porch. The owners wish to enclose it to create a mudroom and a weather vestibule, which would result in pushing a new staircase out further towards the sidewalk. As you can see here, the other photos just show the rear and the sides of the building, which don't change other than this front modification that you can see in the left-side view. So we can, please turn to the next page. Little site plan, it doesn't change much. The roof and the porch structure, lattice, supports, everything stay in place. We're just going to wrap them with new walls and build the new landing and staircase in front that you see on the right view of the proposed site plan. Next slide, please. This is just the survey version of the same thing. So you can see that the setback changes accordingly. The new landing is slightly closer to that radius property line than the existing corner of the railing. Next slide, please. Zoning conformance-wise, there are two categories of existing non-conformity, both of which are getting slightly increased. One is the FAR requirement is .6, existing is .74, and it's changing slightly to .76, if this is approved. The front yard, similarly, 15 feet is the requirement. It's currently 7.9. And the pushing of the steps forward results in six foot even from the front balcony line. Next slide, please. No change in the basement. We can just kind of roll through these for record. Next slide, please. So here's kind of a zoom in of what's going on. The porch with open rails will become enclosed with walls, windows to create that vestibule, and a new landing and steps on the right top is the major change there. Next slide, please. No change upstairs or in the attic. Next slide, please. And the exterior views, to the left is existing, to the right is proposed. So really, what's happening there is the door, doorbell, and wall scots and landing are all moving forward. So the look in this view is the same, unchanged, but it's a depth change. Next slide, please. So here's the side view. You can see the railing becoming enclosed. No other changes to the house. Next slide, please. Rear view, no change at all. We can keep going, probably near the end here. And then the other side view. Again, you'll see the open porch becoming enclosed. So I believe that's it. We did meet with the abutters on October 22nd and with the Civic Association on November 6th. And there were no objections. So that's our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Chair Dunn may have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I'm the Jamaica Plain Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting held on October 22nd with no abutters in attendance. The proponent then met with Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, where they received approval to move forward. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board with their judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no raised hands, Madam Chair.
With that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Now second. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yeah, seem to have my Wi-Fi issues fixed.
You're back.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1636283, with the address of 9 Hillcroft Road. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
If you're on for 9 Hillcroft, can you please raise your hand?
Here, I'm Mrs. Lorraine with Simba, and I have two team members with me. We're here for 9 Hillcroft in Jamaica Plain.
Please proceed.
I'm running the slides.
The ambassador is running the slides.
Oh, all right. Good morning, Madam Chairperson and members of the board. So 9 Hillcroft Road includes alterations to the third floor. And here, we'll walk us aside, pardon me?
No, not at all.
So you'll just have to instruct the ambassador, Madam Ambassador, what page you want to keep going to, or she can keep moving.
Okay, I can keep going. Next page. All right, this page, we have the existing at the top and the proposed at the bottom. And the alterations are going to be the third floor. This home is a single family. It'll be expanding space for a growing family. Addition is on the rear. This is the dormer here. It's two and a half feet above the bridge line. Next page, please. Next page. Right, here we have the existing on the left and the proposed on the right. And here we have the plot plan. Next page, please. Next page, please. So these are just the proposed, just for the record. Can you go to the next page, please? Next page, please. Keep scrolling.
Can you walk us through, what are the actual violations? So, you know, what's the existing condition and what are you seeking? How is it exasperated, if at all?
All right, so the existing square footage is 2,739, and the proposed will be 3,313 square feet. It will be over the FAR by 574 square feet. So that is non-conforming because it's over for the FAR. And also, there's a height issue that is non-conforming. But as our drawings will show, it will remain below the bridge line by about two feet, two feet. Next page, please. And here we have the existing. So the staircase you see here is existing and will be building from up above, yeah, this existing, right?
Next page, please.
Next page.
That one is second floor. That one is demolition plan.
So this is our demolition plan. Next page, please.
Next page, please. Next page.
Just 16, okay.
Next page, please. That one is, that one is proposed.
Yeah, this is all proposed plan. Do you want me to explain further the proposed?
Yeah, basically, we have we have one bedroom and one bathroom. And then we have two closets here. So we additionally have four windows.
Are there questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair. So I don't have a site plan. I have, it looks like I have a site plan from neighboring law here. But I don't have any, at least not the documents that I have, don't have any setbacks on them.
Okay, and Madam Ambassador, do your set have that?
In the plan. Yeah, all right, go. This is the plan.
And maybe we can hear from the planning department, because I think their recommendations also suggest a deferral before planned reasons.
Is Mr. Hampton with us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. We echo what Mr. Collins had mentioned during that. It looks like the site plan that was submitted for the project is actually on Cedarwood. And so we really couldn't do an accurate analysis, too, because it doesn't show any of the setbacks from the existing building. Even though they may be existing non-conformities, the site plan is incorrect, and we really can't do an accurate recommendation. It seems de minimis, but at the same time, it's the wrong site plan. So we asked for a deferral so that they could submit the corrected paperwork to ISD.
Stephanie? Do you have dates that you could propose?
Yeah, so it's...
Karen, sorry.
No, it's okay. We could do February 4th, February 26th, and March 11th.
Would that give the applicant enough time to submit the correct site plans?
Yes, we'll have that submitted.
Okay, may I have a motion?
A motion to defer to February 4th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. We'll see you then.
Next, we have case BOA 1645617, with the address of 1182 to 1186 High Park Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, how's it going, members of the board? Madam Chair, my name is George Graham, owner of the Hating International Cuisine, located at 1184 High Park Ave. What brings me here today is a live entertainment license. To make it clear that I'm not doing any changes with occupancy or any major renovations, we're here. we're here, so it's just a live entertainment license out of things. Give you a brief background of who I am. I'm George Brandt, I'm a Hyde Park native, born and raised. I'm also a Memphis University grad. I dove into the family business from the past 13 months, which was previously ran by my mother. So right now, we're partnering up together. Mom and I are running the family business. With that being said, upon stepping in, kind of wanted to take things to the next level. Part of that was me bringing in live entertainment. I'm aiming to bring in live jazz as well, which is extremely exciting. So I have our community upon presenting from the community. They have nothing but overwhelming support. Everyone's excited. It was to the point that an article was even published on October 16th after my presentation, which just, the community is showing the level of excitement that they have for what I plan to bring. We currently have an entertainment license to one end, and we're looking to change that to a live entertainment license to one end. We were previously known as the Hyde Park Pub, so at one point, there was a live entertainment license, but unfortunately, they closed down. We actually lost that license, so I'm just looking to kind of bring it back. And the whole idea of me bringing back that live vibe to the city is the excitement of the city is waiting for us. As I said, we had overwhelming support. Everyone was in support of me kind of adding this aspect to the restaurant, you know? Yeah, that's a frame of my proposal, a change in regular standards of life.
Thank you. And so no changes to seating or anything else?
No, nothing else is changed.
Okay. Any questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Hyde Park Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abudders meeting held on September 24th with no abudders in attendance. Next, the proponent met with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association, where they gained support and approval. We have also received two letters of opposition stating that the property is not well-kept with parking issues and vehicles blocking driveways, as well as an increase in vandalism and rodent activity as a concern. Thank you for your time in the mayor's office of neighborhood services. We'd like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Chris, are you here to speak on this project?
I'm here to comment on it as opposed. I am, I've been a landlord now for quite some time in the community at 1211, 1215 Hyde Park Avenue. The parking has been a major, major concern of ours. Our tenants have major issues as a result. And I feel as though is that based on where we are currently in that area, parking is a going concern, and our parking lot that we have is being used. Anyone and everyone can end up finding parking at any given time. And I feel as though is that providing additional means of individuals, although it sounds like a great business opportunity, I'm always for business, but yet, you know, somehow, we've got to figure out some sort of parking to be able to end up being provided for it, because they're continuously using our parking lot, and it's just not fair to our tenants. It's increased with violence. It's increased with, you know, all red trash and so forth being thrown there, broken glass in some cases, with also the building glass, it's been a problem. So it's been an ongoing issue with parking and having other people parking overnight as well, perhaps for one reason or another. So we're just not looking to add more to that is our concern.
Thank you.
I see no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Would the applicant like to briefly address that, those concerns?
Yeah, Chris, where are you located?
There, you're director of abudders, I believe. 1211 to 1215 Hyde Park Ave.
Yeah, that, 1211, 1215, I'm not even sure if that's in the proximity of where our restaurant is. We're 1184. That's a little bit more down the block. With that being said, there's also a church, there's a convenience store, there's a barber shop, a hair salon. There's a variety of commercial businesses where I can't say our business be the one adding to outside people parking in the parking lot. I mean, what I can do is I can emphasize that our clients not park where relocated, 1215 address, but that's not even, I guess, close walking distance to our business. I don't think my direct customers will affect that, but I can put an emphasis as to the people not to park at the 1215 area location where you're setting.
Our building's across the street from you.
What building is it?
It's the Autozone.
Oh, Autozone, okay, got you, got you. That's a little bit more towards the left side, down the street, directly crossing 7-Eleven and the church parking lot. Do you have?
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Can you just talk about trash or road control, you know, what it kind of measures that you do to address those kinds of issues?
I mean, with our trash, we have everything in barrels. Not only that, but we have our monthly rodent, I guess exterminator coming by to make sure that he puts down the traps and does the proper procedures. However, with the rodents, that's a known issue within Hyde Park in general. So it's not us specifically, but it's a known thing in Hyde Park to have, I guess, influx of rodents. We're doing our job to kind of maintain the outside of our premises, but we can't really control the entire neighborhood and all of that, but we can't control what may be. With the rat incident, we're in works. I already talked to our Hyde Park liaison about that. I've sat in with the community meetings, where it was brought up within the community, so it's a community-wide thing that they're planning to kind of address and kind of help limit. So like I said, I'm all favorable for supporting and helping to aid this problem, but till then, some of this stuff will be on my control as far as control outside. Back.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberg?
Yes, and good luck.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yeah, yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have two companion cases. Both brought to the floor, Lady from the mayor's office of Alvin. First, we have case BOA 1669715 with the address of 155 Humboldt Avenue. Along with that, we have case BOA 1669711 with the address of 157 Humboldt Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Andrew Baldizon, I'm an attorney at Golson and Stores, business address, 1 Post Office Square, Boston, Mass. Presenting this morning on behalf of Nuestra Comunidad Development Corporation and the Pleasant Hill Missionary Baptist Church. They are the appellant's for 157 Humboldt Ave, 64 Wambek Street, and 155 Humboldt Ave. So just to go through how we're going to go about the presentation today, we're going to start with Diane Clark, who's Nuestra's Director of Real Estate Development, who's going to give us background on the project and sort of the context of the partnership with the church. Haley Hardwick Whitman from our architectural team at Co-Everything will then present the actual schematics of the project, and then we'll kick back to myself to finish up and describe the relief and variances being sought. So to start, I'd like to pass it to Diane Clark to give us some background on the project. Diane?
Great, thank you, Andrew. Hello, Madam Chair and board. Again, my name is Diane Clark. I serve as the Director of Real Estate Development at Nuestra CDC. And based on the alignment of Pleasant Hill Baptist Church's mission and vision for bringing lasting positive benefit to the community and Nuestra CDC's founding mission of affordable housing development, our organizations have partnered to develop the Nehemiah Development Project in Dorchester. We thank you for the opportunity to present this important housing project to you today. I should mention that Reverend Cole Pepper would be here today but is attending a funeral this morning and could not join today's meeting. The Nehemiah Development Project is located at 157 Humboldt Ave and 64 Wambek Street in Dorchester, two adjacent parcels that are owned by Pleasant Hill Baptist Church. The existing building at 157 Humboldt Ave is, has been vacant since its last use as a retirement home in the late 1980s, and 64 Wambek Street has been a vacant parcel since the early 1980s. Pleasant Hill Baptist Church acquired these sites in 1989 and 1990 respectively, and is also the owner of the abutting site of 155 Humboldt Ave that houses its church, that's housed its church since 1939. The Nehemiah Development Team has developed a feasible program for the revitalization of 157 Humboldt Ave and 64 Wambek Street. That program will bring 26 units of affordable rental housing and amenities such as a community room, laundry area, seven off-street parking spaces, as well as access to the MBTA's 44 Humboldt Ave bus route that transports riders to the Orange Line's Jackson Square and Ruggles Station via Nubian Square to downtown Boston and other points of the city and state through various public transportation connections. The long-term vacancy of this site and the critical need for affordable housing in the city of Boston and this neighborhood makes the Nehemiah Development a necessary project and a significant benefit to the community, and we ask for your approval of this project. I now turn it to our project architect, Haley Hardwick Whitman of Co-Everything, to discuss the project design in more detail.
Hi, everyone. Thanks, Diane. Could you please advance the slides to the plot plan slide? So I think the next one is the development overview that Diane just ran through that shows kind of a bird's eye view of the site and the stats of the project. And then the next slide is the existing site. So on the left is the existing structure, the condemned building that's going to be demolished. And the corner lot is 155 Humboldt Street on the right with the church in it. And then the next slide is the proposed plot plan. Perfect, thank you. So this is the proposed plot plan that shows the combined lots of 157 Humboldt Avenue and 64 Wambek Street that form an L shape. So the existing property line that divides the corner lot of 155 Humboldt Street, which is the lot that the church is on, is shown in red, and we're proposing to move it to the yellow dash line to maintain the setbacks between the buildings. This plan also shows the existing abandoned building on the site that was just shown on the previous slide to be demolished, and the intent of the gray shaded area, it shows the proposed redevelopment is to keep the building in the existing building footprint. Next slide, please. So this is the architectural site plan, which shows the challenging L-shaped lot that we are working with. And so the lot wraps around the 155 Humboldt Street, which has the corner lot with the church on it. And the shape of this lot largely dictated the layout of the building while we, you know, maintained the required means of egress routes and while still providing accessible entrances to both the residential apartments as well as the community room off of Wambek Street. Next slide, please. So this is the basement, the basement that includes seven off-street parking spaces, two of which will have electric vehicle charging stations, the shared laundry for the residential apartments above, and bike storage for all 26 apartments. Then the drive aisle is in the top right corner, which is accessed off of Wambek Street because it's a less busy, less trafficked street rather than Humboldt. Next slide, please. The main residential entry to the lobby is located off of Humboldt Avenue, kind of shown in pink. So there's four stories, and in general, the one bedrooms are shaded in yellow, the two bedrooms are in blue, and the three bedrooms are shaded in orange, with a total mix of seven one-bedroom units, 15 two-bedroom units, and four three-bedroom units. Next slide, please. So the Humboldt wing is four stories, and the Wambek Ave wing is two stories to better fit into the scale of the neighborhood. Next slide. So levels two and three, or sorry, level three, this shows the Wambek wing, this is just the roof, because that building's only two stories. Next slide, please. And finally, level four shows how the fourth floor steps back from Humboldt Street to help reduce the massing of the building. Next slide. And so this just shows the neighborhood context that we tried to draw inspiration from the existing roof lines. We're also planning on having a flat mansard roof to accommodate future solar panels. Next slide. Here are the architectural elevations, which also includes the Pleasant Hill Missionary Baptist Church shaded in to show how it'll be masking part of the four-story building. Next slide. And finally, these are perspectives. This is looking from Humboldt Street towards the church. And next slide. And this is looking from the corner on, looking towards Wambek Street and towards the community room entrance. And finally, I just want to mention that this building will be built to pass the house standards, and will have all electric systems, and I'll pass it back to Andrew.
Thanks, Haley. So as mentioned before, this project is coming in under the auspices of Article 80 Small Project Review. As such, there's been extensive community process and numerous meetings with the community dating back to March 2023. We have met with and received the assistance of numerous electeds, including Rep. China Tyler and Rep. Russell Holmes. We've also met with the mayor's office of neighborhood services and the Gerson Trotter Neighborhood Association in order to allay any concerns with the project. With respect to the relief being requested, these are companion cases because the church is contributing land from 155 Humboldt Ave to the project lot at 157 Humboldt in order to reconfigure the lots to provide multifamily housing, the community uses we are proposing. 157 Humboldt and 64 Wambek actually wrap around 155 Humboldt. So the church's relotting is aimed to address the restricted lot area available to us on this project. The relotting of the church's lot will necessitate some dimensional relief for FAR and rered yard, but ultimately, no changes to the existing improvements on the property are proposed at this time. For the project lot, which is again located at 157 Humboldt and 64 Wambek, a number of variances are implicated due to the unique shape and L-shaped configuration of the project lot. As we went through in our narratives, the appellant's restricted in the lot area available because the property isn't exactly rectangular, it sort of wraps around 155 Humboldt Ave. So we're looking for relief with respect to uses, including community use and multifamily dwelling. Dimensional relief is going to be implicated with respect to lot area, FAR, height and yards, off-street parking and loading, and open space. As a project team, we've tried to balance meeting as many of the code requirements as possible while still trying to provide a feasible and robust residential program. Ultimately, the configuration we've come up with is going to provide substantial benefits to the community, including deeply affordable housing, community space, and also while improving an underutilized parcel. So absent these variances, we would not be able to proceed in a feasible fashion. So we really think this will be a boon for the neighborhood, and we ask for your support and will defer to the board to take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
District 7? My name is Angie, I'm representing the District 7 office. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. So I am going to read a letter requesting deferral on behalf of the counselor. It says to who it may concern, I'm writing you regarding BOA 1537047 for the property located, oh, sorry, lot one. Where is it? Okay, well, the one we're talking about now, 16697 Okay, well, the one we're talking about now, 1669715, address 155 Humboldt, requesting... Due to... Oh, is that Kyle? Sorry, I don't think I'm able to read. Due to community feedback, we're kindly asking that this matter be deferred to allow for more time in the community review process. Several community members have expressed concerns about the treatment of tenants in other Nuestra properties, issues such as lack of hot water, non-functioning security cameras, safety concerns, and doors that do not lock property, allowing access for non-tenants, and this has caused significant distress to many residents. These ongoing maintenance challenges have led to a sense of frustration among tenants, and until these issues are addressed, the community shows little confidence that a new development will be properly managed. And so it's being requested that until the current situations with existing properties are resolved, or that the current challenges with existing properties are resolved before... Before moving forward with new projects. The counselor hopes that you will consider deferring this matter to ensure that existing tenants' concerns are addressed first. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, Mayor's Office deferred to the judgment of this board, some background information in the community process. As you heard from the applicant's representation, they went through a BPDA-led community process for small project review involving a public meeting on March 7th, eventually getting board approval in June. They met with the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association several times, you know, going back and forth and kind of presenting their plans. I understand that the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association had written a conditional letter of support back in September of 2023. We did receive a letter from the, sorry, the Crawford, Howland, Ruthven, Winona, Wambach Block Association, seeking a deferral for this project, expressing concerns with the management group and antisocial behavior that's occurred at other properties that they were... Our office stated we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
I have one more raise here, Madam Chair. Yeah, unmuted?
Hi, yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Camille Platt. I'm the project manager for the Planning Department for the 157 Humboldt Avenue project. As Mr. Newman mentioned, the project team hosted one Article 80 meeting on March 7th of this year that was very well attended. The project was subsequently approved by our BPDA board on June 13th of 2024. The Planning Department deferred to the board on their decision. Thank you.
Diane, see, your hand is up.
Well, she's from the applicant team. If there are no other...
No other raise hands, Madam Chair.
Then I'll refer back to the applicant to respond briefly to some of these comments.
I think I saw someone on in the chat from MOH that wanted to speak.
Hold on, let me unmute them. Yeah, unmuted?
Is this Antonio?
Antonio?
Yes. Can everyone hear me? Good morning.
Yes.
Good morning, my name is Antonio Leish. I am a Senior Housing Development Officer with the Mayor's Office of Housing. This project involves the disposition of city-owned land, and MOH has been working with the development team since the tentative designation of these sites. The project does have the support of the Mayor's Office of Housing, but of course, we defer to the board on the decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other raise hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
A hand raised.
Hi, hi, this is Diane Clark from Nuestra. Am I able to speak now?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'd like to respond to two things. First, the most recent comment from Antonio Leish. I'd like to clarify that these sites, 157 Humboldt Ave and 64 Wambach, are owned by the Pleasant Hill Church. They're privately owned. So I'm not sure if you...
Sorry about that, that was a mistake of mine. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. And in response to the counselor's office's concerns, I'd like to say that Nuestra CDC is working very closely with our management company to resolve some of the issues that we've been experiencing at a couple of our properties, one being the Dartmouth Hotel in Nubian Square. So we are working very closely, we're aware of, and working very closely with our management company to make sure that these matters are resolved and that they're not recurring. So we have a strong level of attention to these matters, and we'll follow up with the counselor's office to provide an update on the status.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I think this is a good project, creating 26 affordable housing units for rental, and I invite the proponent to keep working with the community to solve or fix any issues that they may have in the neighborhood. But with that, I think the project is a good project that will really create much needed affordable housing and hopefully create a better community in the local areas. So with that, I make a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second?
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1667294 with the address of 31 Gayhead Street. If the applicant can deliver their representative a present, they please form case report.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Caesar De Silva. I'm here with my client and owner of 31 Gayhead Street. We are here before you seeking for zoning relief on 31 Gayhead Street. We have, 31 Gayhead Street is an existing three-family where a first floor is excessive, is first and the ground floor as one unit. My client has problem on renting such a large space and would like very much to split the ground floor from the first floor and convert the ground floor into its own unit. If we could please come down, go down a page down, I'd like to show the floor plans. Can you hear me?
What page do you want?
Go down, okay, this, go down, go more, please. Okay, here is, okay, proposed ground floor. If we see here the first floor, we would be putting a wall separating the first floor from the ground floor. If we go back up, please. Okay, this is the existing, is the existing ground floor. As you see, we have a family room, two bedrooms, and with the other two bedrooms, three bedrooms upstairs, so it's pretty large. So the objective of my client is to separate these two floors and make a different, another unit. Go back down, please. Okay, you see on the rendering overview of the ground proposed floor, we would be introducing a new kitchen, a family room, and two bedrooms on the ground floor, where the windows, it actually has a window well, and good portion of the windows on the bedrooms is above grade with enough light coming through. That, so go back down one more, please. Okay, so exist, now see, this is the first floor, so the existing first floor, which will continue to be a two-bedroom apartment, the kitchen and living. Is there another page now below? Okay, proposed, as you see, okay, I'll go back, okay, that's the same, that's the proposed first floor. Go back down, go down one more. Okay, it's, okay, this is the existing second and third. So what's in question is just the first floor, and we would like to split those two floors into, that one unit into two units, make it, creating one more unit for my client to be able to rent this other unit, because she finds it difficult renting such a big apartment. And we would like your support on the zoning relief. If you have any question, I'll be glad to answer.
Can you confirm the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Oh, there is 76.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Can you explain what zoning relief you're requesting?
Yes, the zoning relief, here we have off-street parking that says insufficient, use forbidden, lot area insufficient, floor area ratio excessive.
Are these all existing, non-conforming uses?
Yes, and non-performing existing throughout that area.
Other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Jamaica Plain Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting held on June 25th, and very lightly attended, with only one comment to bring awareness to the ability for the general area to flood, as the ground floor is at basement level. No opposition was voiced during the meeting. Next up, proponent of the Jamaican Plain Neighborhood Council, where they were approved to move forward. I thank you for your time, and the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board with their judgment.
Thank you.
I don't see any additional raise hands, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion. Go ahead, David.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. You all have a great day. Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1537047 with the address of 85 Mount Pleasant Ave. If the applicant can deliver their representative a present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Ekel with Fletcher Tilton with a business address of 100 Franklin Street on behalf of the applicant. With me this morning is Tanya Carrier from KDI Architecture. We're, excuse me, we are before you this morning, seeking to renovate the existing structure and erect a rear addition for a total of five homeownership units and five parking spaces. The sub-district is a 3F 4,000, and our lot size is one of the larger lots in the neighborhood at just under 11,000 square feet. The existing structure is in need of repair. However, the main portion of this building does have historical value, and the proposal includes renovating and restoring this portion of the structure while erecting a new rear addition to replace the current existing rear extension. We're proposing this addition to carry the existing roof line and design of the building, and will maintain the rear setback and actually pull in off the right side lot line to be zoning compliant on the side yard setback. Overall, as mentioned, there are five proposed units with two two-bedroom units and three three-bedroom units with an average size of approximately 1,600 square feet. Unit one and two will be located in the portion of the structure which will be preserved, with unit one being on the first floor and unit two being on the second and third floor. Units three through five will be located in the proposed new addition. There'll be tri-level units, each containing three bedrooms as well as a recessed deck. As mentioned, the project has five parking spaces, so we are meeting the zoning requirement of one-to-one parking, and we're proposing parking areas and walkways as permeable to improve water runoff. This lot, as you can see here on the plan in front of you, is extremely deep. It's almost 200 feet deep. You can see our abutters to the left are made up of a number of three families, but between those five lots, there's 15 units in essentially the same footprint as our lot size, which is how we set our density. We do comply with all dimensional regulations, including parking and open space, as well as side setbacks. Our only zoning relief requested is the use at MFR, the five units. Again, it is a 3F district, but it's a 3F 4,000 district, and again, we have 10,973 square feet. We are including a full landscaping plan, and we're maintaining that existing rear setback of approximately 65 feet, so we're keeping away from all the abutters as well as creating a natural buffer zone and landscaping improvements around the perimeter of the lot. This project will allow the preservation of the historic characteristics of the front portion of the building, but also allow for energy-efficient renovation and new safety features such as a sprinkler system for the existing building as well as the proposed new addition. We did have an extensive community process going back almost a year and a half, and numerous changes were made to this proposal, which included reducing the unit count from eight to five. We also had a reduction in overall square footage, numerous design changes. We originally came in with a more modern rear addition, and we've changed that to be more in line with the current building and current nature and characteristics of the neighborhood. We also increased open space, setbacks, and as mentioned, landscaping. We did submit two letters of support and received a favorable recommendation from the Planning Department based on our final submission through the board. With that, I will pause and take any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Roxbury Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting held on June 5th, at which time residents voiced their opposition regarding the density of the neighborhood for such a large project. They did state that the size of the project removes the open space. Other concerns were traffic increase, not enough parking, as well as a rat infestation issue they feel needs to be addressed first. Statements were also made that the owner does not live in the neighborhood, stating claims are made that the owner does but does not. They feel it is unfair for a non-resident to come in and make large changes to their neighborhood. The proponent they met with Mount Pleasant and Forest and Vine Associations, where the civic was opposed to the project, the proponent was stating the project was five units, they were under the impression that the project was not going to be five units and that they would be sticking to the four units, as mentioned. They also said the project is too large at five units and may set precedence for adding to an already overcrowded neighborhood. However, they did go on to say that they would support no more than four units. The civic group was, did make a request or a statement that they would have liked to see the proponent defer today for their project. We have received no letters of opposition at this time. Thank you for your time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board with their judgment.
Thank you.
District 7?
Hi, thank you. This is Angie on behalf of the District 7 office, Counselor Anderson. I'm going to be reading a request for deferral. The letter reads, "To whom it may concern, I am writing you regarding BOA 1537047 for the property located at 85 Mount Pleasant Ave. Due to insufficient notice time, we're kindly requesting that this matter be deferred to allow for more time in the community review process. Residents in the area have expressed an interest in obtaining a little bit more information on this proposal before a decision is made, or as was just noted, community input is crucial to ensure that those with a longer history in the neighborhood have an opportunity to provide feedback to ensure that the project... have an opportunity to provide feedback, um to ensure that the project aligns with the needs and goals of the community. Um, with additional time, the community hopes to be able to provide more thoughtful uh input. Uh, the counselor hopes that you will consider deferring this matter to allow for um a more collaborative process. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul?
Good morning, Madam Chair and other distinguished members. My name is Carl Tedesco. I'm in a director abutter. I've lived in Roxbury for, I was born here and I've lived here for fifty years. So I come to you speaking out of um experience. I've seen a lot of changes in Roxbury, and this is not a positive one. Um, our neighborhood is becoming way too dense. The construction on Mount Pleasant Avenue alone within the past couple of years is overwhelming. Um, this particular project is way too many units. It serves nobody except the owner who lives in Newton and the developer. I cannot see anything positive about it. It's taking away green space, which Roxbury is, needs desperately along with trees, and I think it's just going to increase the carbon footprint. This is the second time a developer has come to us, and the first one just walked away because um they had too many opposition from the neighborhood. And this doesn't help the neighborhood at all, nor my neighbors. Um, so I'm just reiterating what the letter was dated to you earlier read. But I just do not see anything positive about it.
Thank you. Drop off. Thank you. Levett and then Holly?
Good morning. Um, I would like to read the letter into the record, the full. If if not, then somebody from the board can read the remainder. Dear Board members, it was rumored in the community approximately three weeks ago that this agenda item, BOA fifteen-three-seven-zero-four-seven proposal may come before the ZBA on December tenth, two thousand twenty-four. But the December tenth, two thousand twenty-four ZBA meeting was only posted on Friday morning, December sixth, two thousand twenty-four, just two-point-one business days' notice prior to the meeting. So we have a request, we have two requests. One, was it decided by the City of Boston that the proposal would be heard by the ZBA on December tenth, two thousand twenty-four? Two, the second request, can the city mail with all electronic or written correspondence with the proponent including time, date stamps, with the proponent investor and her and their uh representatives detailing the scheduling of the proposal coming before the ZBA on December tenth, two thousand twenty-four? So the community issues with this proposal, point one. A, this investor was informed that the community would fully support four housing units on the parcel associated with the proposal despite it being zoned as a single family. B, this investor was granted that support despite, one, offering no hardship explanation for their request to construct multiple housing units on this parcel, and two, offering no defined, specific, and tangible benefits for the community. C, this investor is now trying to ram five-unit proposals down the, this community road in spite of the community's goodwill. Point two, this investor was made aware of several issues of great significance as to reasons this community and this neighborhood are faced with unique challenges in terms of upzoning for multiple housing units in addition of increased motor vehicle traffic. Um, A, Mount Pleasant Avenue is one, is a one-way street in this section, and cars constantly use this one-way section in the wrong direction. The city is well aware of this, yet has taken no substantive remedial action to date. Two, adding more units and more vehicles will only exasperate this issue. Three, residents are considering a legal action against the city on this issue and would include any city approvals for this proposal as part of that action. B, there is also substant- substantial non-resident vehicle traffic to current multifamily absentee landlords-owned properties on Mount Pleasant Avenue. This is due mainly to non-compliant numbers of occupants living in their buildings. And C, drug sales in use. Point three, there is a major rat, mice, raccoon saturation on Mount Pleasant Avenue. The city is aware of this. The city has made sporadic prevention efforts, including ticketing landlords, property owners violating I- ISD regulations on trash containers, et cetera. This issue
Ma'am, ma'am, we do have the Could someone from the board please read the rest of the, of the letter into the, thank you. We have the full letter. I, I have it right in front of me. So if there's any other highlights from it you want to share, please do. Uh, otherwise, Jessica, do you have additional raised hands? We do have, let Holly and then one more raise hand. Okay, and can you please add new information as to why you're in support or opposition? Holly?
Hello, my name is Holly Shepherd. I represent the Roxbury Neighborhood Council, which is supporting the neighborhood in um reviewing this, this proposal and offering our request for a deferral. Their neighborhood in good faith has agreed to a four-unit building, and this uh non-resident builder who um has come to the table is, is offering something that is beyond the neighborhood's scope.
Thank you. Well, we have John. Uh, John, go ahead. Hey, John, I sent a request on the
I, I won't take your time. I'm just, I'm saying the same things. I'm, I'm, I'm a direct uh abutter uh and
Do you want to give an address?
Yeah, three, uh sixty-two Mount Auburn Street. I'm, I'm directly behind a new, new property. Uh, this will just, oh, the area is already overwhelmed with new construction and new traffic and new rats. It's just too much. Please, please, don't, don't add more.
Thank you. No additional raised hands. No additional raised hands. Thank you. Uh, can the applicant uh respond to uh the various concerns that were raised?
Sure, Madam Chair. I'd be happy to. And obviously, a, a number of the concerns do seem to be kind of neighborhood-wide concerns. However, uh, there were several mentions of the non-resident applicant. I would just point out that the owner and development is the owner of the property. Past applications have come before uh this community as, as speculative developers. The, my client owns the property. They may not live there, but they own the property and obviously have a right to propose a development. They have cleaned up the property since they took it over, both in terms of landscaping, uh as well as uh repairs to the, the structure to make it habitable, at least in the short term. The property was inspected by inspectional services and deemed uh obviously in good enough condition to rent out. So action has already been taken to improve the conditions. As soon as we were made aware of the significant uh rat infestation a- among the community at large, uh, my client took steps to uh hire pest control and contribute positively to uh limiting that. However, comments were made that it's not even uh this property. It's other properties that don't uh really manage their trash well enough, and it's an ongoing issue. So this project does include a trash enclosure and obviously continued uh pest control measures will be taken. Uh, in terms of the size, again, we started out proposing eight units. We are now proposing five units. It is a three-F district, but I would point out there are fifteen units across the street and fifteen directly to the left of us over similarly-sized lots. There are also numerous multifamily buildings along Mount Pleasant Ave, as well as Vine and uh Winthrop Street. So it is not an uncommon use, as noted in the planning department's recommendation of approval. This is also within the Roxbury Strategic Master Plan, uh which is pushing for certain types of housing like this, which can accommodate larger family-style units. And again, we're proposing two two-bedrooms and three three-bedrooms. Uh, again, the, the size of the lot, the, the green space that we're providing, there was a comment about reducing green space. Uh, we're actually keeping the building footprint relatively the same in the rear and actually removing a lot of the invasive overrun species uh and providing a whole new landscaping plan, as well as permeable surfaces to help uh with over-environmental issues, uh as well as making the building safer with the sprinkler system and, and energy efficiency, which, which it lacks now. Currently, the extension in the rear was built in piecemeal and, and quite honestly, needs a lot of uh repair. Um, so with that, we think we, we have worked diligently with the community. We had two abutter meetings. We met with the Mount Pleasant Forest and Vine Association twice and offered to go back again, but we're told they really didn't want to speak with us unless we were going to four. And at this point, with the historic renovation that's, needs to go into this project, five was a viable and, we think, appropriately dense project.
Uh, can you confirm, you said there are other multifamilies? What, what are near you, the number, number of units?
Uh, so we, we range from apartment buildings. There's two apartment buildings on um on Vine Street, which are listed on the assessors as seven to thirty units. There are apartment buildings down on Mount Pleasant at thirty-five, thirty-nine, and forty-three Mount Pleasant Ave. We have a property directly across the street on about two thousand square feet, which is listed as a four-to-six unit. Uh, there's also a number of uh multifamily residential uses, I believe, nine units along Winthrop Street, which is our budding street in the rear.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, are you available to um weigh in with the planning department recommendation?
Uh, sure, Madam Chair. Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. Uh, we recommend an approval. Uh, I don't know what else to, to say about that.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm, I'll put forward a motion of approval, given that the new construction complies with the dimensional zoning regulations and, you know, they're only asking for an additional two units, um, which is, you know, an incremental increase. And I think something the city, you know, is supportive of and wants to encourage, um, moving for approval.
There a second?
I will second. Um, you know, frankly, we rarely see projects with no dimensional relief sought. Um, so the fact the only relief they're seeking is this, this use um variance. It's, um, I, I want to second it as well.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge?
Um, I will vote no, only because um here, uh, reference to the posting for this hearing being uh short. Uh, the post, postings have to be done three weeks in advance, which this was done, um, three weeks in advance and then newspaper. That's, that's the one. Um, so I think there still needs to be some community um engagement um with that lead. I'm not sure, but I'll vote no at this point.
Madam Chair, if I may, not to interrupt, but I don't believe there was anything unique about the posting of this. I, I believe it was posted Thursday, as every hearing is. I, I don't know if there's anyone from the board who can, who can speak to that, but there was nothing done by us different than anything, and I don't think the city did anything differently. So I just wanted to be clear that
It was posted as a normal three weeks ago in the newspaper, and it was posted on Friday, the sixth, um, which is, which is basically, which is the popular, of course, posted online.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Next, we have case BOA one-six-three-two-seven-five-seven with the address of five-oh-nine, five-oh-nine-A, East Eighth Street. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain?
Hi, good morning. My name is Nicole Lopriato. I'm joined today by my husband, Sean Owens, as well as our architect, Alex Zeperson. Um, we've submitted for a permit to build a roof deck on um five-oh-nine East Eighth, where we currently reside. If you go to the next slide. Um, so I believe that's our plot. This is where we're located on Eighth, between H and I. If we go, keep going to the next slide. Um, this is an overview of it. Um, so the deck would be built on the backside of the building, which faces Columbia, and it would be accessed via a staircase that is only accessible through our unit. And there is no interior work to be done. On the next slide, um, a view from the side of the building. So again, this is on the backhand side. The staircase would be built on an existing balcony off of our unit and would lead to the roof deck. And then just a front and rear view. And then I think there are just some additional views on the two slides below.
So just confirming that roof deck is set back off the front, correct? It's, it's the back?
It's the backside, correct.
Thank you.
And that's it for our presentation. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. May we have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ziggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner has completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutter's meeting on October fourth, at which one comment was made in support and none in opposition. Petitioner coordinated with the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association, which took a position of opposition, as is their standing policy, to oppose all roof decks in their catchment area. That background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Councilman?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes.
Great. Good morning, Madam Chairs and members of the board. Laura here for Councilman Flynn's office. At this time, Councilman Flynn would like to go on record in opposition. Councilman Flynn has a longstanding opposition against the construction of roof decks due to their impact on quality of life for the neighborhood for many years. As South Boston has become a destination for young people on the weekends, consistent complaints regarding loud parties at all hours and trash removal issues have steamed from the presence of roof decks. Neighbors continue to report these issues, including arson ears, persons with disabilities, and young families. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Motion of approval. Second.
You, Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA one-six-zero-zero-four-eight-six with the address of Seven Beaver Place. If the applicant and or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Are you going to read yourself, or Stephen?
Uh, let's see. I've got my hand raised. Am I muted?
Yeah, you can tell. Go ahead. We could hear you.
Uh, so anyway, we, we are just looking for the same relief that we were uh granted uh a couple of years ago, and, and that relief lapsed while we um fussed with our neighbor, the school. Um, that got settled. Schools, um, the school has um agreed to uh not oppose what we're doing. Is there any way that I can get you to, to allow the architect and owner to um, to, to speak as well?
Yeah, they can speak. Looks like we're having trouble with the
Okay.
Are you having trouble downloading their presentation? I'm gonna make you a panelist.
Yeah, so
There we go. Nope, maybe. I don't know if you want to continue presenting while we
Well, yeah, I don't, yeah, there's, there's nothing changed. Uh, well, actually, there is something changed. One of the, the Big Hill Civic Association asked us years ago to do, to change the rear roof line, which we did. And we, that, which the architect did, and we resubmitted those plans with the changed roof line. Um, and then our, our relief lapsed. Uh, and now we're just looking for it to be reinstated.
Are there questions from the board? Can we have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ziggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, this petitioner has completed the ONS community process. As the applicant represented, this uh project was given approval in two thousand twenty-three, which then lapsed due to lack of an extension. Uh, the community process was recompleted. This year, we hosted an abutters meeting on August fifth, at which no concerns were raised. The Beacon Hill Civic Association adopted a position of non-opposition. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christian?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Seminale, Boston Groundwater Trust. So we had worked with the applicant on updating both letters. The Boston Water and Sewer Recharge Approval Letter had a 2018 date. We asked them to go back to the commission for an updated letter. They did that, and we have an updated letter for 2024. Similarly, the no harm letter, which was dated 2020, also needed to be revised because they have a new engineer on board. That letter was revised and sent to us. We had a little bit of back and forth on comments, but we're able to get an updated no harm letter from the applicant as well. So we have both updated and most recent letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
We have no additional race bans at the moment.
With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve. And the proviso that the plans be stamped by Boston Landmark Commission again as well.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Next, we have case BOA one-six-two-three-six-six-eight, with the address of thirty-nine Charles. If the applicant or their representative are present, would they please respond in court?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Marancy. Business address of one-sixty-eight Eighth Street, first floor, South Boston. Joining me today is the owner and operator of the new proposed restaurant, Hill Kitchen, Jason Indalaccato. This is a proposal seeking a ground floor change of use from a queen-operated laundromat to a restaurant with takeout. The existing residential units above will remain. The proposed scope of work will only include an interior fit-out. No exterior work to be performed. Hill Kitchen concept is a farm-to-table dining, featuring food directly sourced and responsibly prepared. Food will be directly sourced from New England farmers, growers, and producers. This relationship benefits all farmers, restaurants, and the patrons. Charles Street is a busy street in Beacon Hill with many buildings consisting of ground floor restaurant and retail spaces with residential units above. This area is regulated by the underlying zoning of Boston proper in a sub-district of an H-two-sixty-five, where the restaurant use and takeout under use items thirty-seven and thirty-six-A are forbidden, which we are here today seeking relief. Also, the additional zoning violation we did get cited for was insufficient parking. There is no feasible way of providing parking on this parcel. However, this neighborhood is primarily serviced by public transit. And last, I want to end on this proposal has already undergone approval from the Licensing Board of the City of Boston as well. At this point, Madam Chair, I'm going to turn it over to you for any questions or comments.
Thank you. I believe there were some concerns just about the use of Cedar Lane Way trash debris. It's, I don't know if you want to comment on that?
Yeah, those are some of the concerns. Again, I didn't represent them when they went to the licensing hearing. They had a different licensing attorney representing them. But the trash will be stored interior. There'll be exterior removal, and there won't be any sort of usage on that way. That's only for emergency egress as well.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ziggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner has completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on February sixth of 2024. There were several abutters present. The only concern raised related to rodent activity. The Beacon Hill Civic Association has submitted a letter of opposition to the restaurant use at this location. Said letter should have been forwarded to the board. Should be in the possession of the board. The reasons cited for their opposition were additional trash and food waste exacerbating rodent problems, increased congestion on the section of Charles Street, which backs onto residential Cedar Lane Way. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Once again, Lilly Sweeterman with District Eight. City Councilor Sharon Durkin. Councilor Durkin would like to echo the community's concern outlined in the Beacon Hill Civic Association's letter of opposition. Repona has not reached out to our office, but we have heard from many residents in the neighborhood voicing their opposition to this application. For this reason, Councilor Durkin urges the board to deny the requested zoning relief. Thank you.
Just shout out BHA Family Services offices, I'm sorry.
Yes, good morning. Joshua Lefler, Chair of the Beacon Hill Civic Association. I reside at thirty-seven River Street. I'd like to reiterate our opposition to the application for proposed zoning relief. Specifically, we are concerned about the applicant's lack of prior business operations on Charles Street and their lack of experiencing managing a restaurant, particularly one serving beer or wine. Further, as a neighborhood with twenty-one food service establishments operating on the five blocks of Charles Street, an additional establishment, especially one offering takeout and insufficient trash remediation plan has a cumulative adverse impact on our neighborhood, including but not limited to illegal parking, rats, trash, and noise for the residents above. Thank you.
Thanks. And for the record, we have no additional race bans.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I respond briefly?
Briefly, yes.
So, Madam Chair, we did hear the concerns. And again, this was completely vetted through the licensing department, which gets scrutinized at the City of Boston's Licensing Board, as well as the ABCC, which has since then received approval. Mr. Indalaccato has extensive experience in this industry here. And again, which was seen deemed fit, again, by the City of Boston, approved from the Licensing Board.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have a quick question. I'm hoping Mr. Hampton can answer. Can you speak to the zoning for Charles Street? Is it all within, you know, the same zoning district? And are all the other restaurant uses within that district on Charles Street?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. Charles Street is kind of quirky because if you were to look at the zoning map, or pull it up on, you know, pull it up online to the zoning viewer, the zoning sub-district maps tend to go, you know, bisect some of the properties that front Charles Street. So they are both in a business and a residential zoning district. I believe this is more so on the opposite of the hillside, I believe, is where it bisects the most. So, you know, they can't get cited for both a forbidden use and an allowed use. Well, not cited for an allowed use. But because, as I mentioned, the zoning is so old, and when these districts were drawn, they do bisect a lot of the properties along Charles Street.
Thank you.
Also, Madam Chair, if I may, one thing that's further, I think it will be beneficial to add into the record is that at one point in time, previously, this was a restaurant space as well. Then it was converted over to, I believe it might have been like at one point in time, a Vineyard Vine. So it's been a very tough space to actually operate a small retail business. And again, aesthetically, very similar to the neighboring buildings that have restaurant, commercial, retail space along with residential above.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. I'm sorry, Katie?
No, I will second that. You know, just to my question earlier, there are several restaurant uses on Charles Street, and I don't see why we should treat this one any differently per the zoning.
Is, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one-six-seven-one-five-five-three, with the address of thirty-one Massachusetts Avenue. If the applicant or their representative are present, would they please respond in case of report?
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. And yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Appreciate your time this today. My name is Kyle Smith of Statera Law. Business address of three-five-nine Newbury Street in Boston's Back Bay. On the call with me as well are the two proposed owners of the property. The property is under contract purchase currently with a closing date coming up in this calendar month. We have a pre-existing commercial unit that has been set in a non-utilized fashion for the past five years. It's been a source of contention in and amongst this particular HOA association. We've had both an abutters meeting. We've had a meeting before the Back Bay Neighbor Association. We have support of the condominium HOA importantly, and also the Neighborhood Association of Back Bay, and a lot of positivity from our abutters. The proposal is to take the current existing interior space with no structural change, reconfigure it slightly to create a body art establishment. There are presently only a handful in the Back Bay in total. There's a permanent makeup location. There's a tattoo removal location. And then the board, within about the past year, approved the Boston Tattoo Company for a tattoo parlor at two-four-four Newbury Street. So we'll be amongst a small number of like establishments in the Back Bay. The footprint of the commercial space is seven-hundred-and-eight square feet, is what you're looking at here. There's proposed to be just interior non-structural renovation for two effective tattoo reclining beds, with the one owner on the call to be one of the primary tattoo artists, who's been doing that previously. They like to make it kind of a high-end concept type, you know, comfortable feel with a lot of elegant artwork. So this is just some proposed renderings of just some of their, you know, design concepts. But they would advertise local artists, and those pieces of work would be available for sale. They've already sourced and have some artists in hand and mind for displaying their artwork. If you'd like to continue. The first floor controls the rear of the building with off-street parking, which can satisfy probably conservatively three vehicles, maybe more. So parking is a non-issue and also not a citation, as you'll see by the later refusal letter. Again, this is just a more graphic concept of what they'd like to do and implement as far as the displaying of their artwork. If you'd like to continue. This is our associated refusal letter. We again have only seven-hundred-and-eight square feet. We have at least three off-street parking spaces. We're undergoing no interior renovation work. We're cited solely for a use violation, which is for that as a body art establishment. And again, the HOA is very much looking forward to this particular establishment and a, you know, rejuvenation of the space, which has sat vacant for five years. Again, the Back Bay Association of, the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay has approved as well, a non-opposition. We do have a lot of support also from the local abutters, which are the later slides showing that too, if you want to continue. So this here, letters of support, butter support. And I can certainly let Conrad here, is the representative of NAB, the last slide. So critically, again, we have very large support from the HOA and also the Back Bay Association for the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay and other abutters. And with that, again, the owners are on the line if you have questions about their operation, their prior history of doing such type of body art, and for general questions. And we can also let Neighborhood Services run through our level of community engagement and support.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Ziggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner has completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on November sixth, which was well-attended. A number, high volume of comments were made in support of the proposal and the reoccupancy of an unused space. The concerns raised primarily related to trash disposal and loitering. The Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay is the active civic group in this area, and they are in non-opposition to the proposal. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back here, we have no race bans at the moment.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much, board. Appreciate your time.
Before we begin these discussions for three discussions for eleven-thirty, since we've passed that time, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the eleven-thirty here?
Yes.
And which one, Mike Depick?
That'd be eighty-six Astoria, Astoria Street. There are two zoning-
Please, Madam Chair, Mr. Stenbridge, read it to the record. Thank you.
I'll inform. Thank you, sir. I'll inform. Two companion cases, first being case BOA one-five-three-eight-six-eight-six, with the address of eighty-six Astoria Street. And along with that, case BOA one-five-three-eight-seven-four-zero, also with the address of eighty-six Astoria Street. Would you go ahead, sir?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and also the board. We were given a stay in order to get an approval of our revised plans from the Inspector, Service Department. We just received those plans this morning, and also the refusal letters. The refusal letter for the zoning indicated one less violation, which is good. However, the refusal letter for the building code had two previous violations. Those were eliminated, eliminated given the revised plan. However, the revised plan also meant that we had two new violations, probably not as bad as the previous, but there are two new violations. What that means is that we would have to go out, we'd have to advertise the project again based on those two violations, which means we need more time to get community involvement and approval and also the process again come before you with the, with the new violations for, for the building code.
Thank you. Caroline, what do you think you have?
Yeah, I mean, how much time do you think you need? And then I can give you dates based on that one.
That's a good question. It's, everything seems to take a long time. I would think, given the, going back to the neighborhood group, which is probably January, if we're lucky. I'm thinking probably realistically speaking sometime in February, even March. I want to make sure we have time to get this done.
We could do February twenty-fifth or March eleventh?
March eleventh is better. I think the longer, further back, I think that's probably more acceptable.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer until March eleventh.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The motion carries. See you then.
Great. Thank you very much.
I believe Attorney Spitz has his hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Eighty G Street, South Boston, please.
And that is for case BOA one-six-three-four-seven-six-four, And that is for case BOA 1634764, with the address of 80 G Street. Go ahead, Attorney Spitz.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. We're here seeking a deferral, a short deferral, as we just received the revised stamps back yesterday with an updated refusal. We believe there are some inconsistencies with that refusal that was provided. And also coupled with this, this will allow the planning department to have a review of the updated plans, where their first initial recommendation, we believe that this new revision addressed those issues spoken of during their recommendation. So again, we're here to request a short deferral.
Okay, with that, Caroline.
We could do January 28th, February 4th, February 25th, or March 11th?
We'll take the 28th, please.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer till January the 28th?
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
If there are no further withdrawals, requests for withdrawals or deferrals at this time, friend, we will move, we will return to the rediscussions for 11:00, scheduled for 11:30. We start off with case BOA 1663235, with the address of three of the 17 Lothrup Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Stembridge. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano, with the business address of 11 Beacon Street, here on behalf of my client, Frasier Allen. And we also have Adam Glassman on the call as needed, who's the architect on the project. If we could pull up the presentation, Madam Ambassador. Great, thank you. So as was mentioned, this is a townhouse proposal. It's to raise two existing structures on a 12,273 square foot lot. It's a vacant three-family that sat idle for a while, and then a two-family where the owner who's selling the property resides right now. And so the particular district falls within a 3F 4,000, although around us, surrounded around us on Leo Birmingham Highway across the street are multi-family and larger apartment style and condo style complexes on the site. The proposal that you're looking at in this picture is a townhouse style use, so three-story, eight units of townhouse connected with one interior parking spot through access of an interior garage, which you can see in this proposal. There's actually, although many of the buildings around us are much higher and denser down the street, there's also a townhouse style complex, and that's what folks in the immediate area wanted to see something a little different than the standard block building for this particular area of Brighton. Just to go over, if you go to the next slide, Madam Ambassador, this gives you an idea of some of the contacts in the area. You can see the condo building at 6 Lincoln at 50-56, Leo Birmingham Highway, office building on the corner, the Waverly complex across the street, and so on and so forth. Directly behind us is a city park in Ballfield, so there is a lot of open space that can be used, which is nice for the residents of the condo buildings. If you go to the next slide, please. These are just existing conditions, and you can see right now there's a sheered easement driveway for the two buildings. That particular driveway is 33 feet in length. And what we're proposing is three separate curb cuts in the front of the building that would allow the car access for each individual townhouse. Total square footage of, or total length of those three driveways actually equals 30 feet. So they're less in length than the existing curb cut, or curb cuts that house the existing properties now. And right now, there's a, a large amount of hot top in the front and in the back of the building. We actually are going to create, and will show you in a few slides, a large area of green space as well on this property. You can go to the next slide, please. And again, this is directly across the street, so commercial use across from us in a parking lot facility. Next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. And now we can just get into the plans. If you can go to the next slide, this will start getting into the floor plans. So these are all exact designs, so they're all 1,730 square foot units. They all have a rear deck with egress stair that's 7'3" by 16 feet. The first floor is the one interior parking garage, office, and a bath. If you go to the next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. The second floor of all the units houses kitchen, dining, living, half-bath, and then the rear deck. And then on the third floor, it's two-bed, two-bath, with a small office up there for additional amenity space. So these are all two-bedroom, two-baths, 1,730 square foot units for each one. If you go to the next slide, please. This just shows you sort of the entrance point with the green space all around in the back. So again, the, the back of our property butts the park, but our rear setback is actually 20 feet, little over 20 feet, so 20 feet 2 inches to the actual buildings before the open-air decks. So we do create a large area of green space, some green trim on front as well. We went through a pretty extensive community process, meeting with the BIA to get their support, as well as the butters who really welcomed the change in a townhouse style project, which was something different. Although, and just in terms of the zoning variance is needed, this is an MFR proposal because of the eight units, and this is a 3F district, although we're surrounded by MFR, so we would need a use variance, additional lot area. FAR, we're close, .8 is allowed, we're at 1.1. Rear setback, we're at 20 feet 2 inches to the building, but 40 would be required. And then this particular project, although it still needs, it creates eight parking spaces, 1.75 per unit would be required, but this does fall in line with the new Western Ave Corrida study to reduce parking on new developments for this particular area. With that, I can pause and answer any, any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. I'm not sure if you saw the planning department recommendation. Can you speak to curb cut issues and safe pedestrian access issues?
Sure, I'm sure. So, um, we actually reduced the curb cut from four to three. And, um, again, this, the, the, the plans had already been submitted. We would be happy, and we looked at it, to reduce the curb cut to two instead of three. We can still make that function. The other point to note, and I had mentioned earlier, is that right now there are two existing curb cuts through a sheered easement. Those actually are 33 feet in length. Our three curb cuts are only 30, but we would be happy to reduce that to two, if, if, if that would help, the board would see fit. It looked like the other comments were positive in terms of the actual development itself, given the size and scope of the surrounding buildings.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson at the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on the 1st of October. The design was generally praised by abutters. One concern was expressed about the size of the curb cut, of one of the curb cuts. Petitioner's presented to both the Alston Civic Association and the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association, and they were both supportive of the proposal as presented. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
And, one, Rick?
Uh, yes. Rick Howes here, speaking on behalf of the Mount Vernon Company. We are a direct abutter for the parcel at 30 Leo Birmingham Parkway, which is directly across Lothrup Street. Speaking with a couple of concerns, first being the curb cuts that were just discussed. The buildings are 20 feet from the property line, and so functionally, you're really not able to turn into these garages in 20 feet. The turning radius of even a compact car would not be able to get into a couple of these garages. So I, I don't feel that these curb cuts, as shown, are really going to functionally work. Therefore, they'll have to take more public street parking away to make these work, or have garages that are never used for cars, and then who knows what they'll be converted into. My second concern...
I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you. My second concern is, I will call your attention to the ground floor plans with the garages. Each unit shows an office on the ground floor at the rear of the building that can only be accessed from the rear of the building or through the garage. It cannot be accessed from the townhouse unit itself. Those quote-unquote "office spaces" have a full bathroom, or at least with a shower. So it's very easy to see how you can add a dorm fridge and a hot plate and rent these out as studio apartments. So I, I think that we are create, we're allowing them to create a sort of a de facto auxiliary unit in each of these townhouses, which is a great concern for the neighborhood to have sort of unregulated apartment units.
Yep, Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support. We do feel that we have a lot of buildings being built that are apartment style in the area, and this is, addresses, um, a long-term residential living with private yard, space for a family to grow. So this is the type of housing that we're missing, and so we'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional raise dance.
Any other questions from the board?
Can the applicant talk about why they need an office with a shower?
Um, so it was, it's, uh, just to utilize more space, Ms. Panado. So again, we, we tried to keep these to two-bedroom units, just based on, you know, what we had heard in comments. The office space, really, it was a functional area down there, so that if someone pulled into the garage, there isn't multiple entrances to that. It's, if you're working, you pull in, there's a small office in the back and a small bathroom that, you know, if you were working in your office, you could use like a sink, can sink and a half shower. If the board wanted us to remove that, that's fine. There was no issue with it at all. And again, given what's around us, these buildings are all much, this is smaller, and this was a design that folks worked with us on. On the curb cuts, as was mentioned, all of the driveway, all of the access point in the garage can fit a full-size car in it. We purposely designed it for that. And we also designed it to be interior parking, to keep the cars, you know, lights from flashing and keep everything interior to the actual unit itself. All of the curb cuts and driveway access was reviewed by Inspection Services Department. We weren't cited for anything like turn radius or maneuverability. So all of this functioned in the eyes of ISD and met the code.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, with the proviso that the BPDA takes special attention to the curb cuts and pedestrian access.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes, I think the design reflects sort of the request from the community, and I think the two items Mr. Collins outlined can be improved upon with designer view.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
So we need to go back to our 372 Marlboro?
Uh, which reminds me that I need to apologize to the board and to the, um, to the participants. Uh, I skipped from, right from the 9:30, uh, yesterday, 1:30. So get that, I'll try and get that back on track. With case in the 9:30, with case BOA 1660634, with the address of 372 Marlboro Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name's Anthony Mack. Given the address at 42 Beacon Street in Gloucester, Mass. Also joining us this morning is George Harry Tony, the owner of 372 Marlboro Street. If you could go to slide five. Okay, I'll get started. Thank you. 372 Marlboro Street is an existing 14-unit building. The proposal is to convert it to four units. In the lower-left corner of this sheet, you'll see the area highlighted in red that is requiring a relief. The relief we, uh, request is the Article 13, Section 13, Dimensional Regulations, Rear Yard Insufficient. Article 32, Section 4, G-Cod applicability. We have received our approval letter for that. Article 19, Section 4, Side Yards in H Districts. Articles. If you could go to the next slide. This is our engineered plan. Next slide, please. These are the existing lowest plan on the sheet. Lower-left corner is the area in question. This is an existing alley. The main body of the building is six-story brick with a three-story brick rear L. That lower-left open area is anywhere 38 feet deep and 33 feet in height. This condition is, creates kind of a, a dark area in the neighborhood, and it just didn't, isn't nice. So if you go to the next slide.
Sir, you're actually coming in and out. Might be a bandwidth issue. I don't know if you want, go off camera?
Yeah, I'll shut up on video.
Yeah, thanks.
Uh, yeah, next slide, slide 10, please. Right there. On the lower plan is our proposed garage. As part of that proposed garage, we are going to take up the alleyway, and the existing rear setback for that is 3.7 feet, the rearmost part of the L. That highlighted wall in red in the lower-left corner is approximately 4.72 feet away. By including this existing alley space into our proposed garage area, we're able to fit four cars. And at the same time, above that are at the next unit two, we're able to create next-to你的deck. Next slide, please. We're creating a, a deck at unit three here. Keep going down. Roof deck there. Next slide, please. Uh, these are the rear elevations as presented this morning. The project's already gone through the Back Bay Architectural Commission review. We have approval with provisos, and then we worked with the Neighborhood Association, highlighted red, our new. We're adding a garage door, some nice Oriole windows. On the lower-right corner, you can see our new wall, and the addition in the back is also, slight addition in the back is also highlighted in red. Uh, next slide, please. This is a section through the proposed addition at the alley. As you can see, there's a little bit of a roof there. And there's an existing bay at the rear of the building, which was hidden and lost in the alley, so we proposed to remove that, and we were able to gain approximately 60 square feet by bumping out at the lower Level 1, Level 2 area. It just gives us just a little bit more room and cleans up visual of the existing bay, which was bisected by the existing L wall. And that should conclude my presentation at this time.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson at the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on November 6th, at which no concerns were raised. The Neighborhood Association of Back Bay is in non-opposition to this proposal. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Christian?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boson Grau, Order Trust, and we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chairperson and members of the board. My name is Brianna McCarthy. I'm an attorney at Johnson &amp; Bornstein, and we represent Dr. Emma Wu, who is a unit owner in the abutting condominium at 372 Marlboro Street. Our only concern is regarding the fire escapes that connect both buildings. We respectfully ask that the approval be conditioned on the implementation of the proposed Fire Escape Option 5 Plan dated November 21st, 2024, to ensure the fire escapes stay connected to both buildings. Thank you.
And, I'm not sure we have no additional raise dance.
Thank you. Will the, can the applicant address that concern about the fire escapes?
Hi, yes. Hi, yes. In 370 Marlboro Street, which is to our right if you're facing the rear of the building, they have existing fire escapes that come from their building across onto our property. And we've been working with them to resolve the, the condition as a part of us. And we've presented probably five or six alternatives for them to review and agree with. So we're working with them to resolve that issue. And as part of our project cost, I believe we're in chambers for that.
Thank you. Any questions from, other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, with Boston Water Sewer sign-off and Landmark's commission sign-off.
May I have a second? Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Please be well.
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
The members of board now check.
Madam Chair, I'll try and jump ahead again, but come back to the right place. We have two, we have an interpretation and reconsideration case scheduled for a minute time. And I would just ask at this point if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from either of those cases.
We'll be proceeding, Mrs. Stembridge, I'm sorry, I should have just clarified for you. Proceeding on both.
Thank you, thank you, Chairwoman. With that, then we will return to Case B, the second to last of the 930 case. Case BOA 1639584 with the address of 149 to 151 Pearl Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain?
Sorry, there was a raised hand here.
Hello, can you hear?
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, everyone, my name is Addison Weewell Yucan. I am the new owner of Sign Bistro Taihuzin located on 149 to 151 Pearl Street. So I am here today to obtain a new CV license. And I need to remove the, the current proviso and add my name in order to proceed to the next step, which is the inspection, the building inspection, to get the gold seal. So I could have that last piece of document to, um, to apply for the new CV license.
Understood. Are there questions, members of the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ava Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 149 to 151 Pearl Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. Due to the existing use of this space as a restaurant, we did not require the applicant to have an abutter's meeting, though we did encourage them to meet with the Whorf District Neighborhood Council, which convened on 10/15/24. The association has expressed support regarding the proposal and they have also provided a letter of support for the applicant. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's judgment on this decision. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm happy to answer for the purpose of this office. At this time, the council would like to go and support this party. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have Case BOA 1611821 with the address of 2 Brooks Street. If the applicant and/or their, uh, their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Hello, everyone. How are you?
Good. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Agi D'Souza. I'm a general contractor representing the owner of Israel Baldwin, who's the owner of 2 Brooks Street in East Boston, Massachusetts. I'm the owner of Boston Five Star Contractors. I'm the contractor for this job and now to represent and am here for this presentation.
Please proceed. Yep, please proceed.
Okay, so I'll tell what we're doing here. So this is a single-family, it's a triple-decker, single-family home. Mr. Baldwin and his wife have been living on this house who, I believe, is around 30 years. They own, either, they own both houses, they own 2 Brooks and also they own 4 Brooks next door. So what we're trying to do over here is, Brooks Street is right on the corner with, um, look at my map here very quick. It's right on the corner with, uh, just a second. With a Brooks and also Bremen, Bremen Street is right on the corner. Mr. Baldwin had a back surgery. He's, uh, he's, he's retired, he's home. He doesn't move really well, his mobility is very, uh, stable. What we're trying to do here, he does have a, a, a two-car garage, existing two-car garage under his house right now. They only has a single-car garage to it. What we're trying to do is to add a double-car garage, a 14-foot, uh, garage door to his existing garage. So he'll have access to, he's gonna be able to park both cars under, under, under the house, him and his wife. But in order to do this, we are gonna have to eliminate the main entrance to the door. The door, the house, to the house, the house right now has two means of egress. Has one to the front door, a Brooks Street, which if you look at those plans, as a hallway to bring to the front door. And then the garage on the left. In order for me to do a two-car garage there, I'm gonna have to delete that. The wall there, dividing this. So his, his new primary mean of egress is gonna be towards the back door, which is a street level. This house does not have a basement. It's a street level. On Bremen Street, there's a door there that's gonna become the main entrance now. And then the, the, the door, if you go to the next page down, the proposed, it shows where the new door is gonna be. We're also gonna keep the door to the, we're gonna keep the door to the, to the, to the garage. It's just not gonna be the main entrance anymore. The, the main entrance anymore. So the main entrance is gonna be on Bremen Street, it's gonna be separate. It's all there, it's all legit, it's existing. All we're gonna do is eliminate the wall, the garage to make there able to fit two cars and put a bigger, bigger door. He's still gonna have two, actually three means of egress on the house. So that's the variance we're looking for.
Questions from the board?
Do we have any elevations? Is this all we have for plans?
Uh, doesn't, it, it did, I don't think, is that the only page I have there on these plans? Let me look at the plans that I have, see if I can add something.
I see three pages, but this is all we have?
I believe so. Let me, um, screen, let's see if I have anything that I, no, I don't. No, I don't, I don't. I thought I had something that shows elevation, but it's pretty, on Brooks Street, if you look at, yeah, that's the only one we have unfortunately. That's all I have. That's the only one I have unfortunately. But there is, if you look, that's, what the garage door is like now.
That entrance through the garage is no longer your main entrance, correct? It's a secondary entrance or exit?
Well, we still gonna have a door there though, which is gonna be the second mean of egress. For second mean of egress is okay to do through the garage. But the first mean of egress is gonna be on Bremen Street now, which is a separate door, is there, is legit, is existing. Which is towards, if you look towards the back of the, what is that?
Is anyone from the BPDA on?
No.
Mr. Hampton, are you on?
Yeah, we don't touch building code.
There you have it, Mr. Collins.
What, I, I don't even understand the violations on this one.
It's a
I'll tell, I'll tell what it is, what they told me about some, uh, inspection.
Just the zoning violations, can you just explain those?
Yeah, there is a letter that was submitted by Sarah Tavarez. If you look at, I believe the letter should be attached, but it's not, I have a copy right here.
So Ms. Panato, according to what is on the agenda, this is a building code issue only and there is no zoning.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
So it is, it is a building code.
Mr. Collins, do you, can you elaborate maybe on your end?
I mean, I just, I'm not, I don't think we can grant building code relief, right? That's, needs to be done by ISD. At least I'm not comfortable granting a building code relief if this needs relief.
I think we can, but it's whether we will or should.
Yeah.
The, the thing is, I did submit the application to ISD and I got to 9th level two. I have the copy of the letter in here. It says, prior to mean of egress, shall not require travel to a garage. But what I'm trying to do is, this is not gonna become, become the primary, primary mean of egress anymore. I wanted this, this is gonna become the secondary. Because the primary, the primary mean of egress would be if you look at the far back on the top, there's a door there, straight to the street, to Bremen Street. So that's gonna become a first mean of egress right there. No, no construction needed, it's already there.
So is this no longer being used as a garage and you're just using it as a, like a, a secondary egress?
They'll be used, the garage is gonna be used as a garage. What I need to do is to install a bigger door, garage door there so the owners, which is elderly, he's 71 years old, and his wife with a back problem with surgery, he wants to be able to park under his house, both cars. And we do have the room for it. Our need is to put a bigger door, so for him to come in and out, him and his wife. That's how we're asking. So in order to do this, I need to be, make the back door to become the main mean of egress, which is legit, it's already there. No construction needed for that.
Okay, thank you. Can I have public testimony? Is there public testimony?
It, it doesn't sound like it because it's not a zoning case.
Yeah. Stefan, I'm just confirming, no raised hands?
No raised hands at the moment, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay. Well, are there any other questions from the board? If not, can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I have no further questions. I'll make a motion of denial. You know, they're looking to add a second car, which would eliminate, you know, that primary means of egress that they have right now. I understand they have two means, but I'm also looking at Google Maps on this and it looks like this property is located very close to an intersection. So I, I don't think they should, um, be able to add more vehicular, you know, access so close to that intersection. And I'm not comfortable with the building code relief that's being requested.
All due respect, uh,
We're in the middle of the building.
Is the way you want that, the way I have that one?
We're, we're voting now. Okay. Is, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
No. I think, uh, based on what he says about the gentleman, uh, I think it's good. I'll leave it there.
Mr. Valencia?
With that, I say I vote no.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes, to the denial.
Ms. Panato?
I vote yes to denial. I don't think we should be granting building code relief.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
The chair votes no, the motion does not carry. Is there another motion?
No.
I'm thinking, I'm not sure if with the referral, the proponent could go back to ISD and just figure it out, what kind of relief they need.
Do you wanna put forward a motion of deferral?
So I put a, a forward motion, motion for referral, yeah, the referral, sorry.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Caroline, is there a date?
We can do February 2nd, February 4th or February 25th.
Does that work for the applicant?
It does, yes, please.
Which, which one, so we can confirm?
The first, the first ballot, the earliest ballot, which is February what?
Fourth.
Fourth. So please make sure you're connecting, reconnecting with ISD before then and so you can provide additional information as helpful. Thank you. And with that, with that, we will take a 15-minute break.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Bridge?
Present.
Mr. Valencia.
Present.
Ms. Weewell.
Present.
Ms. Panato.
Present.
Mr. Collins.
Present.
Recording in progress.
Mr. Langham.
Present.
Floor is yours, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, going back to the rediscussion scheduled for 11:30, we will jump ahead to case 208-1597917 with the address of 5 to 11 Ashmont Park. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, will they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Marancy, business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. Uh, with me today is the applicant Anthony Monahan, and the project architect Eric Zacherson. This is a proposal to erect a new four-unit residential dwelling on a vacant lot with two private roof decks and five covered parking spaces. Ashmont Park is very close to Dorchester Avenue with convenient access to grocery stores and other amenities in, as well as a three-minute walk to Ashmont MBTA Red Line Station and many other bus routes. There are also many other mixed-use buildings and multifamily dwellings located within this area. This parcel consists of approximately 3,900 square feet and falls within a 3FD 3,000 sub-district. The erection of a multifamily dwelling is in line with the planning goals of 2030 while increasing the city's housing stock along areas serviced by transit. All units will be two-bedroom, two-bathroom ownership units. Ground floor will consist of parking for five vehicles, along with a trash storage. Unit one is a duplex unit located partially on the ground floor and second floor, and will be approximately 1,625 square feet. Unit two will be located on the half, on the other half of the second floor, and will be approximately 985 square feet. Units three and four will be located on the third floor and will range from 985 square feet to 1,122 square feet. Both units will have an exclusive right to a roof deck accessed by hatch. We have violations for use. We are proposing four units in a 3F sub-district, but the proposal again is in line with the planning goals of Boston 2030 of increasing housing stock and in line with many of the other recently approved projects in this neighborhood. We have an additional lot area violation, the proposal is well-aligned with the surrounding context and the existing context where adjacent lots are already zoned for multifamily residences and would further help increase housing opportunities near this transit. We have a floor-area ratio violation, we're proposing a 1.49 and a 1.3 is compliant. Again, the proposed density aligns with the goals outlined in the planning context of this area. We have a side yard violation, proposal has a setback of three feet on each side and five feet is what is compliant, but this type of setback is similar in this neighborhood. And concluding, this proposal aligns with the mayor's initiative increasing the housing stock, especially in areas of transit neighborhoods, as we are a three-minute walk away from Ashmont Station and also further is aligned with the recommendation of approval from the planning department. At this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to you, Madam Chair, for any questions or comments from the board.
I thought the front said it was a five-unit development, the first page, it's a four-unit?
Yeah, sorry, yeah, sorry, I was on mute, same question.
Yeah, Ms. Panato, we went through multiple, um, changes on this proposal. Um, so we are down to four units, and as you could see, uh, from the plans, uh, that were presented here today, we are proposing four units.
Okay, thank you. Four units and five cars still?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board, my name is Ava Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 5 to 11 Ashmont Park, I will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including in a Butters meeting on 6/21/24, which was attended by 12 constituents. The primary feedback from this meeting was that residents had several concerns, ranging from cohesiveness with the neighborhood, density on the street, late-night disturbances due to the roof deck, trash management, parking, and accessibility of the street. I have also received 11 letters of support and three letters in opposition, in which one cited that the Abudding Fire Department is also opposed to the proposal and there was a petition from the residents that expressed that they would prefer that this lot be used in the future for the fire department to expand into the, or into the lot. Uh, the petition was signed by 60 constituents, including Director Butters. Additionally, the proposal was reviewed with St. Mark's Civic Association, which convened on September 24, 24. The association has expressed strong opposition to the proposal and at this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs to the board's judgment on this matter, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, um, hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, Liam Remus and Councilor Fitzgerald's office. Our office also received the, uh, opposition concerns from residents of the street and local neighbors who reason our office would like to on record in opposition to the proposal, thank you.
Thanks, William. Dale?
Hi, uh, my name is Dale Sennashaw at 2 Ashmont Park, I'm the Director Butter. Um, we were the authors of the opposition letter that Ava mentioned with 60 signatures on it. Um, one other thing that's not been pointed out is, according to the assessors' report, um, the land is classed as unusable for that lot. Um, Ashmont Park is literally the narrowest street in Dorchester, at only 16 feet wide, curved curve. Everything else is at least 20 feet, or most of them are 26 feet. Um, this zone, this street should have never been zoned triple, triple-decker. Um, the other recent additions to the street, or triple-deckers across the street from this property, um, that were originally bid as four units and knocked down to three, um, there are no other multifamily residences that are more than, than four, except for an, an existing building that was reconverted into a triple-decker style, that was already five units on there. But all the new stuff, um, was three units and we believe that this street is way too small to support yet another oversized unit, that literally takes up almost the entire lot. Um, there's also, um, on the Butters meeting and in all of the meetings subsequent, we've asked the developers for a construction plan, because when they did the two apartment, there are condo buildings across the street, they had use of that empty lot for storage and of equipment and parking of vehicles. They won't have that now, since they're trying to build on that lot. Um, there are fully occupied units now in the new condos across the street directly from it, plus others, two houses on that street and driveway access for the apartment building on the corner and the doctor's office on the corner. Um, there is no real access need, any, any way that they can have a construction there without serious disruption to the street.
Stella?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, hi. So my name is Stella Costello. I live at 222 Ashmont Street, just around the corner from, two houses from Ashmont Park. And I have to, I had to put a no parking outside my house because of people parking there now because again, the station is around the corner. And I noticed that since the, excuse me, the two units went up, there's a lot more motor vehicle activity on the street. The street is tiny, it's very tiny. And for cars to get in and out, I take my life in my hands just getting out in my driveway. And the same with Ashmont Park. So it's just, right now with those six units that replaced two single homes, it filled up the street. And by adding more units, it's just not, it's just not reasonable or feasible. Thank you.
We have no additional raise. I'm sorry, Krista, just raise your hand, go ahead.
Hi, I'm a resident of Dorchester. I live around the corner on King Street. I've been there 13 years. I'm in support of this. I do think having more housing near transit due to the lack of housing in the community would be beneficial.
Thank you. Can we keep going and have two additional raises, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Okay. Sarah and then Shane?
Hi there, my name is Sarah. I also want to echo what Krista had just said as well. There's not a lot of opportunity to build so close to rapid transit here in Boston. And like Attorney Spitz had said, this aligns with the mayor's long-term plan for adding more units to the city of Boston, which is in desperate need of more inventory. Thank you.
Okay. Shane? Shane?
Hi, sorry, yes, I'm in support of this project. I think there's a, I was saying. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
And yes, I'm in a Butter there on Millwood Street in Dorchester as well. And I'd be in favor of this project. I think we need more housing and I'm very much in support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional raise hands.
Any other questions from the board?
Do we have a planning department recommendation on this?
Mr. Hampton?
Yes, Ms. Panado, you should have our recommendation of approval with design review.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Spitz, were you briefly?
I just wanted to, yes, I just wanted to address some of the things that we heard from one of the neighbors. You know, so as far as the allocation of unusable land, when you have vacant lot, it's just an allocation from the assessing department, how they allocate, doesn't mean it's actually unusable. Again, you know, after reading the planning department's recommendation for approval, the context and the size of this parcel fits the need of what they're looking for again and much in line with some of the recently approved projects here. I think some of the concerns we've heard just, we went through multiple drawings of the neighbors and addressing all their concerns as far as the dimensions of the building and reducing in the size and the density. Some of the concerns that we did hear were pre-existing conditions as to the street and safety of the street and the cars and pedestrians. Nothing that we could not help. But again, what I will do is during the construction phase, I will encourage the owners to be again, good neighbors just like they were. They built the project directly across the street from this one where they were commended for their good neighboring skills of notifying neighbors anytime there's going to be any sort of impact. And we get it, it's a dead-end street. But if approved, that these contractors will be building this proposal just like they did across the street and will ensure that everyone's notified and they do continue to be good neighbors during the construction phase.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with PPA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panado? Yes. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1635245 with the address of 64 Harbor Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, this is Stembridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Linds, business address of 245 Summer Street, East Boston, behalf of petitioner. I do believe we, I provided a deck to the board. I do see the plans up here. It is a relatively straightforward proposal, but I did have some context photos of the surrounding neighborhood in case there were specific questions. As you can see and from the notice, this involves a relatively straightforward roof deck on the top of an existing three-unit building. This would be exclusive use for unit three only. There are two violations that are cited. The first is the excessive height. The base of the roof deck, the floor of the roof deck is just slightly above 35 feet and therefore would require variance for the height limit. We do believe that is a de minimis violation as it's 0.66 above the 35-foot height limit. The second is the side yard. In this particular zoning district, the side yard setback requires 10 feet. Would have a, not such a feasible layout if we had to set this back. We do not obviously go beyond the existing footprint of the building and it is contained or at least set back from the front. One thing I would point out is the access to this is by the rear deck with a spiral staircase. That's one of the reasons I wanted to include the context photos. There are a number of similar roof decks on properties in the immediate vicinity of this site that are designed exactly the same way with access by the spiral staircase. The reason we are proposing, and I do not understand the board's position when it comes to that, is that it's not practical or feasible considering this existing, an existing building to arrange for a hatch. The layout of the third unit is quite tight and in order to arrange for a hatch to allow access up to the roof deck, it would really impede with the layout of the unit. So we're requesting the approval for this based upon the relief that's necessary. And again, I apologize, I did, I know we were on for a hearing in November and I did provide a deck to the board, but I apologize if the board does not have those context photos to show what the existing and surrounding conditions look like with respect to similar decks. Have any answer, any questions to the board?
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the mayor's office of neighborhood services. As previously testified by our office, we'll defer to the board at this time. Our office had conducted a Butters meeting and the applicant went on to meet with the McCormick Civic Association where they received a letter of support. I run away from any concerns at this time. We'll defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Liam Remus from Council for its Gerald's office. Our office would like to on record support of this proposal. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, we have no raise hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion of approval with planning department, here you go.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins? Mr. Collins?
Sorry, yes.
Okay, Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
The next case has been deferred, which takes us to the last of the 11:30 cases. And that would be case BOA 1658107 with the address of 21 Wellington Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, hello, my name is David Fried and I'm an architect at Chuen Company. We have, the project is a two-family renovation with a small rear yard addition and we've provided a no-harm letter to the board for their review and approval. We're here for G-Cod review.
Got it. Questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Christian Semenali, Bossy Morales, trust, and we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
And with that, may I have a motion?
Most note approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to the interpretation case scheduled for noon. This would be case BOA 1669915 with the address of 36 Orient Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Stembridge. Good afternoon, again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linds with a business address of 245 Summer Street, East Boston, behalf of petitioner. This is on, as Mr. Stembridge indicated, for interpretation. I would suspect that we may be seeing a few more of these as the new zoning in East Boston sort of takes shape and the understanding of how the old zoning relates to the new zoning and certain permits and approvals that were in effect at the time under the old zoning are somehow now being, either projects moving forward to be constructed or amendments are being filed. Just by the way of brief background, this project was submitted originally as a three-story, two-family dwelling under the prior provisions of Article 53. At the time, the zoning district was 2F-7,000. And within the 2F-7,000, a three-story building was allowed as a matter of right up to 35 feet in height. Ironically, when we had presented this to the board for approval, we were not required to seek relief for the three stories again, as it was allowed under the dimensional regulations of Article 53, Table F. The only relief that was necessary at that time was for ancillary parking, where we included parking spaces on, joining a lot which is owned by the same project proponent, modal alignment because of the setback of the front of our property and then the rear yard setback, which was slightly below the 45 feet that was required. So I'll reiterate that at the time, there was no relief necessary for the height or the stories as it did comply with dimensional regulations. Accordingly, the building permit, which I've supplied a copy to the board with our written testimony on this, the building permit that issued authorized the construction of a three-story dwelling. The third story that was shown in the plans that will file at ISD actually was unprogrammed space because the design of the building did have sort of the hip roof and we were intending that that's to simply remain as attic space at that time. However, it was the third story of the property. And in order to comply with the maximum FAR limitations, we were not proposing to program that space at that time. The permit ultimately on this, it issued December 5, 2023, and that was in accordance with the board's zoning relief that was granted. And at that time, it would have become a legally non-conforming structure based only upon the rear setback relief that was granted as well as the front setback alignment. As this board is well aware, Article 53 then was amended in May of this year where the zoning district for this property changed from 2F-7,000 to EBR 2.5. And as a result, two things happened. First of all, under the new EBR 2.5 district, maximum building height went from three stories to two and a half stories. That's significant because even though that occurred, it occurred in May of 2024 and that was after the building permit for this project would have issued and after issued to allow for a three-story building. More importantly, the maximum FAR was modified under the EBR 2.5, which actually increased it to an overall 5,000 square feet. This building that as, as was being proposed before the board today remains under the 5,000 square feet and remains unchanged with respect to the height of the building or the layout of the design of the elevation. We do have the plans for the board to review it. So during the construction period, which often happens, a permit amendment was filed. And in this case, the project applicant sought to change the upper unit, unit two, to add three bedrooms. So this would become a four-bedroom unit, which is something that is pretty consistent in that neighborhood. This is more of a one- and two-family style neighborhood and this unit would certainly allow for a larger family household to occupy the building. That amendment, when it was submitted to ISD with the plans, was rejected in refusal as letter issued, for which we were cited, the number of stories has been exceeded at three. We had attempted to communicate with the plans examiner at ISD that it was immaterial that we were using that space on the upper level because the building permit that issued already authorized this property to be a three-story dwelling and it was a pre-existing, non-conforming structure at the time. The Boston zoning code protects this exact situation under Article 4. More importantly, Article 53 and the amendments thereto that occurred in May of 2024 also specifically speaks to projects or buildings that were permitted prior to the enactment of the zoning. Long story short here, Madam Chair, is we believe that this is an error in interpretation of how the zoning code is applied. The building permit, which is clear on its face specifically states that the applicant is authorized to have a three-story dwelling. The building itself, as you can see from the plans here, I can just probably jump through. As you can see here, it presents as a, what I would argue appears to be a two-and-a-half-story dwelling, but it simply is based upon the amount of square footage that is available under the roof that would create the perception that this were new construction would be considered a three-story dwelling. One of the things I will point out is that the examiner was relying upon the fact that the space was unprogrammed at the time it was permitted and therefore somehow that's of some significance or some moment. There's nothing in the Boston zoning code, nothing in Article 2, that talks about that, that whether it's programmed or not. In fact, it would be illogical for that to be the requirement to determine whether or not it's a story. As I suggested in my letter to the board and to ISD, to say that a space that's not programmed to say that the space that's not programmed would not count as a story would contradict the actual plain language of the zoning code. And in that instance, you could have a five-story building and simply say, well, the fifth level's not occupied, so it's only a four-story. That's not the way the zoning code was written. And the use of the space is really immaterial in both the definitions and in practice for how a story is calculated. So the bottom line, long story short here, and thank you for allowing me to explain this, is that the building permit that issued allowed this to be recognized as a three-story building, and that meant there were three floors. Whether or not they were programmed in the original permit is immaterial to that evaluation. And we believe that the examiner is in error, that the building permit that allowed three stories should be recognized, and that the amendment to allow the use of that third level for floor space would be authorized and permitted under both Article 4, as well as the amendments to Article 53. I'm happy to answer any questions, Madam Chair. I know there's a lot of information to be added for interpretation.
Thank you. And I understand, is Mark Joseph on from ISD to speak?
Yes, Madam Chair, good, good afternoon, and members of the chair, good afternoon, good afternoon, Mr. Lynn. Well, I, I don't think ISD aired on this particular matter. The building permit was issued with a two-story building, so where the attic was unfinished. There is a floor plan and the same, same, same thing there that Mr. Lynn talks about. He only showed the elevations, but there is a floor plan that would show that when we issued the building permit about a year and a half ago, they did not act on the third story. It was blank, it was unfinished. It's only when they apply for amendment, they come up with the full story finished floor plan for the attic, where the zoning code clearly says it's two and a half stories. Two and a half stories mean half story for the, for the attic. But it's 100% finished, therefore, I don't think ISD aired on this. The zoning code clearly said two and a half story for the no zoning. They are acting under the no zoning. What the old zoning says, they did not act on it. They cannot have this for perpetuity, the old zonings. So we acted on what was in front of the plan examiner based on what the zoning code tells them to do. I mean, the three stories, they just submit the no plans there. With the third story, they had copies of the unfinished plan. And then what we approved way back was unfinished. And I believe that's what they acted on, under the old zoning, so that's what they got at this point. So I believe ISD did not air on this.
If I may, Madam Chair, just briefly, and I certainly respect Commissioner Joseph's opinion on this, and you know, certainly been at this a long time. I think the confusion comes from what is being attempted or what the attempt here is to cite as a violation. The only violation that typically would come up in this instance, and we, I think we need to recognize that the zoning change is significant here. The only issue that could come up with, with respect to whether the space was finished or unfinished is FAR. FAR looks at habitable space or space that is used in the building. There are numerous instances in the city of Boston where floor space is unfinished, whether that's a basement or an attic, and that it's changed later, even though the building itself is not changed. And the violation that typically issues is excessive FAR. The FAR has been exceeded. In this particular case, because the FAR is still not exceeded, the ability to utilize that unprogrammed space would be, would be permissible under the zoning code. Once again, Article 2 does not specify anywhere, anywhere about whether the space is programmed or not when dealing with calculation of stories. The story is the floor space between a roof and the next level. And in this particular case, there is a third story. I would point out that the definition of half story is more or less used as an exception to a story, not necessarily to say that it should be only a half story. So in this case, the fact that there is space between the upper level of the floor, of a third level, and under the roof, that area is considered a story by definition. And therefore, they would be allowed to program that space, provided that they do not exceed the FAR. And that is pretty straightforward when you look at the definitions in Article 2, Madam Chair. Again, thank you for allowing me to respond to that.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Ms. Phyllis, can you explain how does one access the attic? And did that change from the initial plans to the new plans?
I believe there was access from, so that, great question. I think that second level allowed for access up to the attic level. But we did not show it as programmed in the original building permit with bedrooms and a bathroom. That was a change that was made after the building permit that issued.
Yeah, I was asking how, like, was there just like a?
Oh, yeah, I believe there was a stairwell that accessed that.
So there was always a stair accessing the attic? Or was there just like a hole in the wall where you climb up into the attic?
Yeah, not the pull down. I'm fairly certain there was a stair. I apologize, I don't have that plan directly in front of me, could look for it. But I, I understand that there was sufficient access to get up to the attic. It was just not programmed space.
Okay.
Mr. Collins, do you, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the height originally approved for the building is the height regardless of the other space. They're two different variances. So I tend to agree with Mr. Linds here. It's a previously approved project. The zoning changed, but that should be grandfathered in since we approved it prior to that zoning being in place.
Thank you.
And if I may, Madam Chair, to Mr. Collins' point, the board did not have to grant relief for the height of this either. It was by right to allow it at 35 feet. And I think it's also significant that the building permit that ISD issued actually says three-story building. So, you know, if this were one of those situations where the board had granted relief for a variance or, you know, height, for example, or the building permit itself did not reference three stories, then I would say we'd have a different situation and we'd probably be asking for different relief. But that's not the problem.
And the building permit was pulled before that new zoning was enacted, correct?
That is correct. This is December of '23, Mr. Collins, the date of the permit. And it's, and I did, I did provide that in an email to Stephanie. It does, it does specifically state in there that it has a, it's allowed to be a three-story. Yeah, there's the letter. So we scroll down to, and the zoning decision is well sent three stories. Yeah, right there.
In my opinion, regardless of, when the building permit was pulled, pulled is, is the, the rules that we have to follow, right? So it was pulled at three stories. It can't change mid-project.
Yeah.
Yep.
I guess, when was the amended permit pulled?
That would be after, during construction after Article 53 was amended. So the amended permit was, I believe it was June.
Okay, so it sounds like ISD looked at the project as a whole again when that amendment was filed. Is that, that's my?
I, I believe that's the way it was, through the chair, I believe that's the way the examiner was initially interpreting it. Where we weren't abandoning the permit and filing for a new permit, which I would agree with the examiner, anything filed after the public notice or the amendment of the zoning would be limited to two and a half stories. The building permit had already issued, and therefore, what was allowed under that permit was, was protected under Article 4. Any amendment to that certainly would have to consider the zoning. However, we were already allowed to have the three stories based upon a lawfully issued permit.
Thank you.
This, this would be the same as, you know, any, any change to an existing building being told, you know, if it's an existing three-story building, being told that any modifications would require it to only, to be reduced down to two and a half stories. That's not, that's not the way the zoning works.
Madam Chair, may I respond to that?
Uh, yes.
I beg to differ with Mr. Lynn here because they did not act on the previous decision of the board. When they would act a three-story, they got a building permit that says two-story, and then they submit plans that shows only two stories. Mr. Lynn claimed that there is an access to the third unit, which claim attic. So we're not sure of that. That's not something we're not sure. I cannot definitely say that there is a finished access to it. And what was in front of our plan examiner in June, when they applied for the amendment, the amendment was only for a real deck. And then they submit the new plans to act on the decision of the board, which was already finished, classified, done under this permit here. So the plan examiner was within his right as a plan examiner to cite that section that claimed to two and a half story as the new code tells them to do. So I don't know when the board acted, give a decision. If the decision is therefore perpetuity for all the time, even though when they do not act on the decision. In this case here, they did not act on the decision of the board. So that's what, and for the verse here, Mr. Lynn talks about, but why can't we show the plans to see what we approved and what was acted on and what we gave a building permit for when we gave the permit from or to erect the two units with the attic unfinished, even though this language say three. Regardless of that, it could have been non-conforming to the no zoning. So that's the problem that we had because everything was not told to the plan examiner at the time. So he reviewed the plan. That's the issue here.
Thank you.
I believe ISD aired on this one here, Madam, and I was like.
And one final word, if I may?
Let's, let's take the questions.
I, I think we should, I think we should approve this, but I think that it does sort of rest on, did the plans really show clear access to that attic when they were approved or not? And I think Mr. Linds didn't really give us a clear answer to that question. He said, I think there was real, there was access. And Mr. Joseph says there may not have been when they approved the plans. And I think that's where, I think they're both right, maybe. That, but I do think a three-story building, because that's what the zoning was when, when the original permit was approved and is something we ought to approve today.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board? If not, it sounds like we're ready for a motion.
So I'm happy to make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have reconsideration case, scheduled for 12 noon. This is case BOA 1667121, with the address of 106 Webster Street. If I heard correctly before, prior to this, I believe this is one Attorney Lynn's case. It was also?
I think it's correct, Mr. Stembridge.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself.
Okay, so Mr. Collins is recusing. It is the six-member board.
Thank you. For the record, thank you, Mrs. Stembridge, Madam Chair, members of the board, Richard Linds, 245 Summer Street, East Boston. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner. I believe James Christopher is with us as well. I'm going to try to narrow the scope of this request. I was recently retained by the property owner to review this and to advise on what I understood to be a procedural defect in this particular case. Not getting into the substance or merits of the hearing from the last, I believe it was last week. I'll talk just briefly about the request for reconsideration. So as this board knows, it did take up this matter last Tuesday, at which time a full presentation was provided, I believe by Mr. Christopher. At that time, the board moved to deny the request. That denial motion was seconded and voted seven to zero. Once I was retained, I looked through the file, I reviewed it, and I did notice that the public notice for this, this meeting does contain an error. And that error, I believe, would deprive the board jurisdiction of per the matter. And in that case, the appropriate remedy would be to reconsider, rescind, and to reschedule. We would therefore request that the board, through a member who did vote for the denial, we are respectfully requesting that the matter be taken up as a reconsideration, that the decision essentially be nullified, and that a new public notice corrected be put forward and that the matter be rescheduled for a further public hearing before we can have any further discussion on the merits of the proposal. Now, I certainly understand there's a little bit of, some information, history, or some miscommunication on what may or may not have been in the file. We're happy to present that at a further public hearing. But we think based upon the error in the public notice, that a proper notice should be published first before the merits of the case can be heard again. I'm requesting that this be put on, I believe, January 14th, and I believe there's sufficient time in order to renotice this, in order to ensure that happens. Have any other questions?
So Attorney, so Attorney Linds, can you just remind folks? Because I don't think, I'm not, I don't think everybody who's here today sat last week.
Yes.
What is the issue here? What error, what was the error?
So if you see here, it says Article 68, Section 29, Roof Structure Restrictions Enlarged. That is applicable to South Boston neighborhood district. Article 53 is applicable in East Boston. East Boston has separate rooftop restrictions, rooftop regulations as compared to South Boston. And more importantly, the notice should reflect the, the appropriate section of the Boston zoning code before the matter can be heard. Normally, I would say this is more of an issue when it's the other way around. We would want to ensure that if the project were approved, that would certainly present an opportunity for an abater or party of interest to object to the hearing based upon potential defect in notice. In this particular case, because there was a motion for denial, the applicant would be in a position to have the ability to raise that as an issue of objection. So in this particular case, we are requesting that the matter be renoticed and that a new hearing be scheduled for January.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Okay, hearing, no questions. I don't know if Mr. Hampton, you want to weigh in, since I see you?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I would echo Attorney Lynn's comments about having this reconsidered and then the merits be heard at a later date. I do believe that I think everything will come out in the wash during the public hearing. But the city supports the motion for reconsideration based on this administrative issue right now and that during the hearing on the 14th, I think the merits will be discussed.
Thank you. If no questions from the board, may I have a motion?
Also, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just if your board, if you and the board do choose to reconsider this, the date would be January 28th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just, from a procedural standpoint, I believe, Caroline, you have my letter. If a member who's sitting today was not sitting last meeting, they would not be able to make the motion. Anyone can second it, but the motion would have to come from somebody who voted for the motion to deny.
Okay, well, I don't 100% remember who was on last week. So if someone who sat last week wants to make a motion?
I will make a motion for reconsideration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge? Are you?
Let me try it again. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a happy, safe holiday season.
Happy holidays, everyone. See you in the new year.
Thank you.
Take care.
Bye, everyone.